Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council. It's Tuesday, May 28th, 2024. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu. Mr. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Hershey.
Here.
Ms. Colasetti.
Here.
Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Wilkin.
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the previous meetings of May 20th, 2024, and City Council and the May 20th, 2024 Committee of the Whole. Is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
They're second.
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Jaya. Are there any substantial corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. There are no additions to the agenda for tonight. We'll move on to presentations and public input. We have no scheduled presentations, so we'll move on to public input. If anyone wishes to address the Urbana City Council, please step forward to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Good evening, City Council. How are you? I'm hoping that you're doing well. I'm Minnie Pearson, President of the NAACP Champagne County Branch. I understand that the council members and community have numerous concerns regarding the hiring of additional police officers in Urbana. However, we must remember that we hired Chief Boone for his expertise and his leadership. At this stage in his career, I'm confident he aims to leave a legacy of success, not failure, in Urbana. As the President of the NAACP Champagne County Branch, I also have a few questions, but I firmly believe in Chief Boone's vision for Urbana. Strongly, I propose organizing a community coalition town hall meeting soon. This would allow Chief Boone to provide clarity and transparency and offer the community an opportunity to ask questions and address their concerns directly, face to face, and also tell us about his strategic plan that he plans to implement and is data-driven. In talking about this, when we say trust and leadership, I want to emphasize that the trust placed in Chief Boone's expertise and commitment to improving Urbana's safety is important to all of us. Legacy of success, I want to highlight Chief Boone's dedication to leaving a positive legacy in Urbana, ensuring effective and responsible policing, especially dealing with and sharing with and participating in the Ten Shared Principles. Community engagement, one of the reasons I'm here too. I want to stress the importance of town hall meetings, of a town hall meeting for fostering open dialogue and transparency between the police and the community. That's important, always, to build trust. Also, direct communications. I want to advocate for a face-to-face interaction where community members can directly voice their concerns and receive immediate answers from the chief himself and other police officers as well. Collaboration and transparency emphasizes the need for collaborative efforts between the police and the community to build trust and work toward common goals. This is key. Fighting and seeing and wanting things to be our way, most times when they are, they are not, we go out of our way and we pretty much impose our own views instead of the community's views. And you know it's to be true, I know you can't talk back to me, but I know you know what I'm talking about. We want to know that whatever we decide in this council or in this community, whether or not it takes us closer to the goals that we set up for the success of Urbana, or does it take away from what we want to do because of our own personal views? The best way to find out about these kinds of things is to have an open community coalition meeting, open house, where we can actually talk back and forth, face to face, and face some of the issues that is important to Urbana and to this community. Again, I want to thank you for listening to me. I had talked about this once before, about the hiring. I trust him and really, and his police officers. They have really been working with the Ten Shared Principles, and that's important. Building relationships is important. Trust does not come without building relationships. And I understand to hear people say we cannot police ourselves out of situations, but you would be surprised at what we can do if we are tackling these kinds of things on one accord. So, thank you for listening to me tonight. Thank you. I know you won't clap, but that's okay.
Hi. My name is Ron Kester. I live at 1209 West Oregon Street on the west side of Urbana. If a budget is a moral document, then conversation about the budget is really a discussion about the sort of justice we seek as a community. This is never truer than with the budget of the police, a vocation that collects evidence of alleged crimes, whether it's a homicide or a speeding ticket, and which vocation assists the state's attorney in prosecuting cases by providing a report, physical evidence, and sometimes courtroom testimony. Did you notice how I did not say police are here to protect us? It's a popular misconception. As a longtime member of Community Court Watch, I've attended hundreds of criminal court hearings, listened to all the details of crimes and their investigations, and it's rarely the case that police protect anyone, mainly their professionals at collecting evidence. In the course of their duties, the police also sometimes respond to alleged crimes in progress, in which case they also try to mitigate harm. This is the image of policing we know from movies and TV shows, and while this is helpful in some instances, such as domestic violence cases where no contact orders are routine, mostly what the police do is compile evidence. I grew up in a very gun-friendly household, the sort of family that has a small arsenal in a bedroom closet and knows how to use it. I was seven years old when I first fired a gun, and I was carrying a shotgun through the woods when I was 10. I try neither to be overly respectful nor idly dismissive of those who carry guns for a living. What I can fairly say about anyone who carries a weapon in service to their vocation is that, as soon as the weapon comes out, any notion of a budget as a moral document vanishes, and the interactions that follow are about following commands, not justice. Even when guns and tasers and pepper spray are simply present, on display but still holstered, the use of force premise significantly robs a situation of its capacity for justice. Don't try to talk your way out of a speeding ticket. We all have heard this advice. Always say yes, sir, and no, ma'am, when we're dealing with the police. We've all said this to young people, to help them stay out of trouble, we say. Staying out of trouble, this is what comes to mind when municipal authority is represented by its use-of-force potential. When weapons are present during the interaction, conceptions of neighborliness and reason will always take a backseat to use-of-force potential. This is why we never count on policing as a vocation to improve community justice or community safety, even if they lived in the community they patrol, which, as we know, most police officers don't. As we discuss the city's budget, I would like you to imagine funding a community responder model in place of more police, one that has its own department, its own budget, its own pathways to promotion. A community responder model consists of licensed social workers, trained and trauma-informed, nonviolent communication, with an expertise in connecting clients with the resources they need to solve problems and be sustainable, more than just helping people stay out of trouble. The community responder model uses a different form of authority, which we call reflectivity, which is about sharing information and talking things out. An estimated 73% of the calls for police service in Urbana could be handled by community responders. These are calls about noisy neighbors, suspicious persons, mental health crises, overgrown lawns. As an activist, I know that institution building is not what government bodies like to do. They prefer to do almost anything but build new institutions. In practice, this means funding what's already there, which are known quantities, even if they are also less effective than alternatives. So, I'm here asking you all to take on the hard task, go the extra step, and assume the extra risk by building a post-policing institution based on the community responder model. By investing in nonviolent forms of authority when and where we can, we do more than promote a law-abiding citizenry. We create the basis by which residents are more likely to trust municipal authority, are more willing to engage in nonviolent communication skills themselves, and are readier to think about what it means to make our city a better place to live. This is the promise of building out a community responder model. More than closing criminal cases or impelling people to do as they're told, we create the foundation for a new municipal authority premised on nonviolent intervention. I urge you to ratify a budget that strongly supports a community responder model in place of traditional policing. Thank you.
Before you begin, we have a council rule that if there are 20 or more people who speak, we can go to a three-minute-per-person speaking so that folks, everybody gets a chance. Can I get a show of hands for anyone who wishes to speak tonight? I'm not seeing it. Do you see 20?
I'm counting less than 20, and I would encourage, since some people have already started speaking.
No, I understand that. I get that, and I don't see 20, so we'll go ahead. You have five minutes. Thank you.
I'm Denny Schertz-Hubert. I live at 710 West Oregon Street in Urbana, and I've lived here in Champagne, Urbana, in Urbana, since 1971. And I'm here, and by the way, I love the police department, and they've helped me in many ways, for years and years, so I'm pro-Urbana police, only I think they need a bigger budget, a huge one, because of the things I've been involved with personally. I run a business. I ran a bed and breakfast for 27 years. I have had rental properties, and today I ran into a weird situation that I've been dealing with for two years. My next-door neighbor is not poor. I pay almost $15,000 a year alone in real estate taxes. That doesn't count the other little fees that I paid at the City of Urbana, so I do want to be heard. Today, I heard a weird noise, and I went out and looked, and there were people in my yard that I've never seen before, and they were cutting down a tree. Part of it was mine, and I didn't ask them to do that. I've never seen them in my life. And they also had cut down the neighbor's tree and crashed it into my house, and I've been complaining for two years. Well, today I found out that I have to use a licensed electrician, a plumber, a roofer, and all kinds of other occupations, but I did find out that you do not have to be licensed, insured, or bonded to have a gigantic tree cut down. And so, today, a person showed up, a company that my next-door neighbor hired, had what looked like boys, not men, cutting down these tree branches, and they had broken down almost a $30,000 piece of canopy on my house and punctured my roof. And they also came into my yard, and it was marked clearly, "Do Not Trespass" in multiple places. They had opened my gate, they came under my hedge to get in, they used my ladder, they did all kinds of things, and yet I was told that they hadn't broken any laws, which I still disagree with that, but now I was told that they don't have to have a license, they don't have to have a permit, they don't have to be insured, they don't have to be bonded, according to all the departments that I called in the city, and so I'm asking that you change that. I want you to make these people accountable for working. My house is a multimillion-dollar piece of property, and yet they're allowed to come in with people that I've never seen and grab onto these gigantic old dead trees that are my neighbors and tear up my house, and no repercussions, except for if I go get an attorney and have to get nasty and sue somebody. I don't want to do that. They should have been licensed, they should have been insured, they should have been bonded, and you should know who's doing that kind of work in these neighborhoods. And I don't know if you do know or you don't know, but why is it that I can have my $150, $200 toilet stool repaired by somebody that's licensed and insured and bonded, but not a multi-thousands-of-dollar job on a tree that could affect my own home and everybody else's life? I had called for two years and said, I really, if it rains or it's windy, I don't feel comfortable going to sleep at night because that tree's right above my bedroom, and it was hanging on by a thread. So, I'm asking the city to pass some sort of an ordinance where you have to be licensed, bonded, insured. The police officer was really nice. He went next door, two of them did, and they got the man's information. His information was a name and a cell number, no address, no license, no insurance card, no idea at all, just he wrote down his name and his phone number. Now, I tried to call the cellphone number, nobody answers. I'm not sure that I should be put in a light that I have to sue somebody. I don't think that's right. I just don't. And I'm sorry that I had to call two police officers to come out and deal with people in my yard that I've never seen, no repercussions. I mean, I don't know what else I have to do. Put up razor wire? What else? That's all I have to say.
Paul Muth, 207 West Illinois in Urbana. I'm also going to extemporize. That was a well-crafted essay by our colleague here. I also am standing against the focus on police responses, and I think a community response system is well past due for Urbana. Other cities are doing it and are having great success. The statistics that he gave about the character of demands on police time that don't require somebody with a gun is quite important. I mailed a piece from the NewsHour to the mayor, and I should have mailed it to my Ward Five representative as well. It was well-crafted, and it did report back on those kind of programs. There's not as much as we should have expected by now, I would think. This is four-year anniversary, this past Saturday, of the public killing of George Floyd, and I think it's important to remember the activism that was so palpable at that time across all races, classes, genders, and I implore you to seek this out. If you have to postpone that part of the budget to wait for the response from the report that I understand you're supposed to be getting on this issue, I'm not entirely confident that the report will be as much to my... But that's a rumor. We have to see what they say, and if they at least catalog those kind of responses to the problem of public safety. I commend your attention to public safety forums that happened at the IMC. Very important testimony from a guy that operates one of these community responder programs, and he urged, one of the things that my takeaway is, was that he says this should not be under the police department. It should be under quite a few other options, community development, public safety, I mean, Public Health District, which is not entirely possible, I guess, because we have Champagne County. But anyway, obviously, I didn't prepare this as well as I should. I had a little bit of audio. I don't see a countdown clock, and I didn't bring my egg timer for four minutes. Oh, there it is, so I still have time. I mentioned that PBS NewsHour program that had a report on those kind of features. There was also, in the last couple of weeks, a weekend edition segment, which I can read to you, or maybe I can actually play it.
...they hired a commissioner for the first time, a new chief came in just recently. They also announced plans to create a new early intervention system, so they say they'll use data to track police officers who seem to be in trouble or on a troubled path and intervene before something tragic happens. And another high point has been the expansion of the city's behavioral crisis response teams. So, people in Minneapolis can now call 911 in nonviolent situations, and unarmed mental health responders are going to show up to help. So, Minneapolis appears to be investing in the sort of public safety efforts that do not require armed police, which is what a lot of folks were calling for way back in 2020.
And how are the city and the police department still contending with some of the other consequences of what happened to George Floyd in 2020?
I don't want to go on too long with that, but you can find that. The segment about Minneapolis responding with the community responders is, I wanted to emphasize that, and I felt like I did there. I guess I'm over, am I?
Got 52 seconds.
Oh, that's counting down. Okay. Well, I'll defer to Ben, who you're all familiar with, with his great work getting the Gaza response resolution through.
Hey there, everybody. My name is Ben Jossen. I live here in Urbana. Got a few things to say. First, I want to reiterate that the reason that the Barry Dunn report sort of came to be, I think, is in large part due to public folks like the ones you see here today coming forward in 2020 to say that we want a different version of public safety, and we want you to take a look at that, and I commend you all for the work you did to commission a report towards that end. And I'm not sure who took the language of race and homelessness out of the contract that was signed by Barry Dunn between the city, whether it was Barry Dunn intentionally doing that, which I see a history of in places like Oak Park, or if it was city administration because they weren't interested. But in any case, that link wasn't made, and the report they've given us doesn't include that oversight, and that's why we're so mad about the fact that we were asked to be trustful in a system that was going to try and address these issues, and four years later we're faced with millions more dollars for police and no more money. Well, there is some money put in there, but I strongly advise you not to do the way the community officers that are currently being put forth, which will be housed under the police department, and sound a lot like what Michelle Winesaddle was sort of calling non-badged police officers, which seems to primarily be a budget thing, the way she described, like, going to have sunglasses taken out of your car and the fact that the police aren't going to solve that anyway. You could have a non-licensed police officer solve that, just like you could have somebody who's not a gun-carrying person collect a name and a phone number from someone who's cutting down your tree. I think you're going to have probably a better response from a community member who's lived in the community, who we hire and we keep that money here. Police are incredibly expensive. While we talk about $100,000 as an average for a new police officer, I looked at the fiscal year '23 budget, and Urbana discloses everybody who's made over $75,000 compensation, and the lowest number I could find for compensation was for a police officer was $89,000, and the average number was $120,000, with several making $160,000. And so, I think that, you know, you throw in benefits, or benefits are somewhat included, but taxes, and you're looking at way over $100 on average for our long-term numbers for how expensive police numbers are, and then you just compare that to places like the Cunningham Township, where you see salaries at $68,000, $47,000, $30,000, $34,000, $33,000, and those folks are saving people's lives. And in terms of community, like, talking about the budget as a moral document, you've got police officers making well over $100,000, costing the city way more than folks who are trained longer for community response and who often live in the community. And so, you can get more folks who are based in the community. It's so beautiful to imagine a model where we go to communities and say, who in your , like, area is already solving the problems? What grandmothers, what community problem solvers do we have who are already dealing with the teens? Who knows your community, and how do we hire those people first, instead of hiring very expensive folks and training them with weapons? I want to mention quickly that I think trust is a bad policy. It has nothing to do with how much I do or don't trust Larry Boone when I talk about wanting to have Urbana City Council pass good policy. Trust is good for the people we've got now, but we don't want to write policy based on who's currently in office. We want to set ourselves up for success and to make sure that we move ourselves in that direction. And yeah, I really hope that you continue on the route that you did where you were trying to hire and reimagine police. Barry Dunn came before you and said they were trying to reimagine public safety, and that's simply not what you've been delivered. And if you pass this budget, you make that impossible, because we're not going to be able to raise taxes for an exploratory alternative model. We have a chance with the current staffing to do something new and different that really forwards public safety. We've got a chance. If we can be raising that kind of money right now, we could be doing something different and new, and we could be forging a path that looks different here in Urbana. We'd be paying people who are here to create real public safety, to create real mental health resources. We could be doing better, but not if we pass the budget that's being put before you today. So, I urge you to follow through on the visions that you had and do justice to all the time and effort that's been put in by our community to ask for something new, because we deserve that, and you deserve that.
Hi, my name is Faith Ryan. I live here in Urbana as well. I'm here to tell you that the aching pain...
Could you speak a little bit closer to my...
Yeah, of course.
Just tip it down toward you.
Yeah, my bad.
There you go.
Sorry, I forget I'm 5'4". So, the aching pain in my back and the depression settling into my skull should be enough to convince you that the city of Urbana does not need to expand its already prominent police presence. A month ago, a police officer with the Department, with the University of Illinois Police Department brutalized me. I, along with more than 50 students and community members, faced disproportionate violence while exercising our First Amendment rights to protest. Videos taken from the day of the assault teach me something new every time I re-watch them. I slowly remember the events in details and the order of events of that traumatic timeline. There are still considerable gaps in my memory that I am not sure I will recover. One of the videos shows a cop masking his identity with a black gator, black sunglasses, a black hat, and gloves, shoving me to the ground by my neck and shoulders. He assaulted me from behind while my back was turned, trying to grab my wrists and force them behind my back. I don't remember any of this. I do remember my body hitting the ground. My body slamming into the grass must have brought me back into it. When I returned, I was sitting with my legs out in front of me, and my hands were behind my back. I don't know where I went. It must have been nowhere because it didn't feel like anything, because there was nothing. When I came back, I remember being shocked that I was on the ground. Had I been knocked around in the chaos? Had I passed out? Had I slipped on the wet grass? After being held without the intent to arrest, they let me go. The police subsequently retreated from the area, leaving a body camera and a fully-loaded magazine of bullets on the ground. When I tell people what happened, they ask the same questions. Why? Why would they send an officer intentionally concealing his identity to attack you? I stopped asking myself those questions a long time ago. I already know why. Why? Because it's the very nature of their job to meet the prospect of property damage with extended batons nervously fumbling with deadly weapons and grown men ready to body-check someone half their size at any moment. The fundamental role of the police is to protect capital. That is it. Human beings are not capital. We cannot prioritize public safety if we continue to make people do what is antithetical to their commands. This begs the question, why do we need to increase taxes and create new ones to support new expenditures for investments that do not return? There are alternative responses and response actions that the Urbana City Council can take to meet our community's needs. We must meet our community members where they are at and with the patience and understanding that it takes to maintain safe relationships and environments. If proportional responses were the expectation, maybe my sciatic nerve wouldn't feel like it's on fire. If proportional responses were the expectation, maybe the trauma of being assaulted wouldn't torment me while I slept.
Thank you for sharing, by the way. Hello, I'm Maxwell Haynes. I'm a social worker, a UIC student, and a Urbana resident. I can't personally think of a bigger waste of money than expanding the police force. For one, they don't need it. They already have a budget, and they waste it on traffic violations and monitoring peaceful protesters, if not injuring them. On top of that, there are almost $30 billion in police funds that come out of the federal government every single year. Let them use those funds, let them use the funds that they currently have. After all the protests against cop cities across the country, shooting of unarmed civilians, wrongful detentions, wrongful executions, harassment of students by SROs, anyone on the street can tell you that they don't feel like the police keep them safe. The sentiment is backed by research, even in the Barry Dunn report, a consultant that you all wasted your money on. I could have told you that the Urbana police office... I could have told you that the Urbana police officers spend most of their time with proactive policing like traffic stops. Across the country, police consistently spend more time on this tactic. The myth of a police officer saving the day is almost nonexistent and almost no crimes are responded to in progress. Police on average only spend about an hour per week responding to these types of crimes and the hero is a statistic anomaly. Between 1971 and 2013, 62 studies were conducted that showed no demonstration, demonstrated relationship between increased police force size and reduction in crime. When there were any relationships, they showed increases in crime with increases in policing. So I've already addressed that police can't prevent crimes, but they also are terrible at solving crimes. According to the Pew Research Center, police solve less than half of all violent crimes and even less of the nonviolent ones. Police are also solving less and less crimes every single year with about a 10% reduction in efficiency on average. Only about 4% of officers are devoting their time into these investigations. You might claim that Urbana police are well-trained, but across the country, police are twice as likely to pull over African-Americans and here in Urbana, it's no different. African-Americans make up 18% of the population, but about 50% of traffic stops. Most crimes in the US aren't even reported and I don't blame people. I would never call the police if I was a victim of a crime because I do not trust them. According to the University of Chicago, at least a quarter of a million people are injured by police every year and so far in 2024, they have killed 462 people. There have only been nine days this year that police have not killed someone. Why do you think Urbana would be different? Do you really want to protect us? If so, I strongly advocate looking at alternative policing and alternative methods of response. And as you do so, phase out police as they retire. We do not need them anymore. They're antiquated and they cause more problems than they solve. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kate. I'm an Urbana resident and a student. As someone mentioned earlier, about a month ago, there was a peaceful protest that took place a Friday afternoon. Students stood, they protested for a cause they believed in peacefully. And this city sent many cops, along with champagne, the sheriff's office, Muhammad and the university police. And they stood there for hours. I believe it was twice that they shoved the students around, they went up to the students, pushed them around and tried to arrest people. They ended up arresting two people for peacefully protesting. And when they weren't doing that, they stood there for hours and hours watching students bringing riot gear, standing, doing nothing. So I guess I just wonder that if the police have the budget and the time to do that on a Friday night, I don't think they need any more money. $2 million is a lot to add to their already huge budget. I believe it's 14 million this year. And if they have the money and the time to waste on students who are speaking their mind and peacefully standing in the grass, then I wonder why we want to give them more money if they have so much money to waste. Police do not keep us safe. As someone mentioned earlier, police have killed almost 500 people this year across the country and it's only May. I think it's absolutely ridiculous to even consider giving police more money. We don't need them. They make us less safe. I've never felt safer on a police officer and I'm sure many people here agree. And we need more, like people have said, we need more alternative responders, people who are not armed, who are trained in mental health and how to deal with crises and de-escalation tactics, which police are not often well-trained on how to do. So I urge you, instead of adding $2 million to the police budget, please instead consider funding other sources of nonviolent de-escalatory practices with mental health professionals instead. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm really glad this microphone could be aimed downward as well as upward for all the tall people. My name is Dottie Vera Wise. I am a retired physician, worked in family medicine and then in public health, have a master's in public health. And it was very clear to me in my practice, something that most people know by now, which is that prevention works better and is less expensive than having to cure it afterwards. But if you do have to cure it, you need to have the right methods and the right people. You wouldn't want me to come take care of you if you needed an appendectomy or needed your gallbladder out. And just the same way, but I could deliver a baby, okay? So you need the right person in the situation. And the other thing is that it's really good, especially as people in a university town, to get experts who know the general studies, the information that shows what's going to work. And as other people have said, it's often somebody with mental health training, somebody who are recreation specialists. Recreation programs have been shown to be helpful in decreasing crime in a number of cities. And finally, being a university town, when you have information being gathered that's specific to what you need, it's worth waiting until you get all the results of the study. And so I was amazed to hear that even though only part of the Barry Dunn study has been delivered, the city council is looking towards going ahead and committing large amounts of money to solving the problem by getting more police officers. So I hope that you will go back to common sense logic, even back to our founders. Ben Franklin included in his almanac that a stitch in time saves nine. So it's a well-known policy. And so I wish you would go back to that and also to wait for results of the study that you're paying for before you go ahead and commit a lot of money to increasing the police force. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephen McGuire. I want to urge you to postpone the decision to increase the police budget. Spending on social service under this budget has increased from a paltry $100,000 to a measly $300,000. Urbana residents are in dire need of social services. For example, I had a friend who owned a game store. People would routinely, after being kicked out of the hospital and in dire need of mental health services, show up there, causing problems. Shelters have no room and they've stopped taking names for a waitlist. We commissioned a report from Barry Dunn that cost us some on the scale of our whole entire social services budget. Before Barry Dunn has analyzed community responder models, you've proposed that we increase the police budget. I know why we spend so much on police, but next to nothing on social services. When you divert money from the police budget, their union responds. If you divert money from anywhere else, construction, there's someone who comes to your office. But when you take money from mental health services, when you take money from social services, no one shows up to your office to complain because we are too ashamed or struggling too much to be able to advocate and say that that's wrong. Please postpone this. And if anything, if you're going to spend money, spend more on social services. We definitely need more than $300,000. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jane McClintock and I'm a resident of Urbana. I wanted to speak also to encourage you to postpone the decision to invest in police until you have, at the very least, had a chance to consider the results of the Barry Dunn study. I also want to encourage you to, the Phase 1 study that we have presents a lot of really interesting data and I wanted to commend Professor Cobb for having broken it down for us in such a useful way and everyone else. A lot of people have said really beautiful, big-picture things about, you know, in a large sense, you know, why have we not yet considered racial justice? Why was racial justice out of scope in this picture? But I wanted to bring up something kind of small, but also I think kind of critical to the question of, you know, what we should do going forward. And that is that I think we haven't spent enough time looking at the comparison communities that are in our Barry Dunn report. For example, the comparison studies show very clearly that we have a much higher level of administrative and executive supervisory police officers than any of the other, you know, whether it's communities that Barry Dunn has studied in the past or whether it's national benchmarks. And I think that's really important for us to not just look at comparing to ourselves, but how do we compare to other departments? And another important factor there is when we look at how our patrol staff is doing on these calls for service, the Barry Dunn report uses the amount of time that our patrol staff spends on a single case and then multiplies it by the number of cases and divides that to get the number of police officers that we need in Urbana, which is a fine logic, except that I think it would be much more logical to use the average amount of time that a police officer spends on a call for the obligated workload. Because if other communities are responding to calls in a certain amount of time, that's the absolute necessity. I think it's wonderful that our police officers are spending almost twice as much time on all of these calls for service, especially considering that 64% of these calls are not about crimes and that every call, as I've spoken about before, is an opportunity for our police officers to build trust in the community, to be community outreach officers because they're making connections with people. But when they spend twice as much on these calls, let us consider that the unobligated time. This is in fact exactly what we want them to do with that 40% unobligated time. If we truly want them to have 40% of their time to do whatever they want, what we'd love for them to do is engage with the community. And they are doing that, taking almost twice as much time as an average community does to respond to calls for service, which I think is great. It's much better than spending that time just doing traffic stops, which, you know, of course, we've talked about how problematic that is. Anyways, I recognize that that's very specific and esoteric, but I wanted to share that with you, partially just as an encouragement, to really dig into the really useful data that we have in the Barry Dunn report and to really take the time to wait and see what they have to say about community responders, which this community could really benefit from. And we could really, you know, join dozens of other communities in forming an alternative that will better serve not only their community members, but also our police officers so that they can focus on what they're really trained to do and we can have experts focusing on what they're trained to do, like social work or mental health care. Thank you for your time.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Marlin, City Council and city staff. My name is Deshaun Williams. I am a proud Urbana resident. I am here because I want to be, you know, a part of the new vision for public safety in this city. I've said this before and I'll say it again, you know, we all deserve to live in a safe, thriving city and using the same plans of overpolicing simply won't work. That's why we are seeing all of these folks here behind me, all of the individuals that have spoken before, because they are eager and wanting to be a part of a new vision for public safety in Urbana. We need to look at similar cities, you know, to ours that are leading the way in community policing and alternative response, such cities like Evanston where they've learned to bridge the, to build bridges, I'm sorry, between people in law enforcement, how we decriminalize poverty and reduce officer workloads to ensure things like noise complaints aren't swamping our departments. When we follow these examples and make investments in the programs that support our most downtrodden residents, that will most certainly make a safer city for us all. And we'll unite the city in the process of doing that. So I appreciate you guys and I hope that we make the right decision together. Thank you.
Hey, everybody. I'm Derek Biles and I'm a resident of Urbana Ward 4. Unsurprisingly, also here to talk about the budget and the plans to increase the police budget by an insanely high 61%. I really want to go back to, I think, what Ben had mentioned about trust. And I think that is such a huge component of this. I think you started out on the right foot. You listened to the public, you started this public safety review, you've completed one sixth of it. And then now you're just completely eradicating that trust by having just a small fraction of the data and saying, oh, hell, we need more cops anyway. Screw the study. We don't actually want to reimagine public safety. And I'm curious as to why that is. You have such a great opportunity here. It's a silver bullet. Cops are overworked and they're doing mostly work that doesn't need to be done by a sworn officer. Hire community responders who are qualified to respond to those calls, not a cop who might not even have any formal education beyond high school, right? Qualifications to become a police officer, very low, despite the very high salaries that they get. So this is an easy problem to solve. You've got cops doing work that cops don't need to do and then you've got money that you want to put to the cops for what reason, right? Like why would you, if you want to achieve a task successfully, you need to choose the right tools. And you're just obviously not choosing the right tools. Just like Jane McClintock said, there's great data available already in this very incomplete public safety report that just seems to be ignored. I mean, the vast 73% of these calls are nonviolent and noncriminal. Why do we need a sworn officer dealing with that? If 73% of their calls are that, I mean, take half of that and you don't need to hire a single new cop. I mean, it's just, it's a weird, false dichotomy you're creating here. Like I just simply cannot fathom the logic behind this. And so you're really eroding a lot of trust that I think you had built up in the community with this move. And on the issue of trust in institutions, I think it should be obvious why people do not trust the police as an institution. You know what the, sorry, I was trying to pull up some statistics, maybe I don't need to be that dorky about it, but do you know what the clearance rate is on crimes across, just on average in America? It's like 51% for homicides. It's down like 28% for rape. 28% of reported sexual assaults are solved by police officers. The National Institute for Sexual Violence says that only about 40% of sexual assaults are even reported to the police. And of that minority, only 28% are the police able to do anything with. Why would we pay them for that? Why do we want more cops to do less work but over police? We know that about 17% of Urbana is African-American, yet 41% of arrests over the last 20 years are of black folks. The poverty rate, according to the US Census Bureau in Urbana, is almost 28%. While you sit here and you make your six-figure salaries as mayor, as city administrator, as police chief, think about 28% of your community living below the poverty line, right? If you want to address crime, if you want to address public safety, give people what they need. Give people affordable housing. Give them mental health care, right? Give them the social services needed to get these people out of poverty. That's what we need. Throwing more poor people into jail is not going to help and having officers do work that they're not trained to do is not going to help. Let's stop forcing the police to do work that they're not trained to do and shouldn't even be responsible for doing and do what you said you were going to do- even be responsible for doing, and do what you said you were going to do in the beginning, and rethink what public safety could be in Urbana. Thanks.
I'm Chris Selly, and I'm a member of the CU community. So I think we've heard a lot of really good things today about how trust works, how to establish trust, whether hoping on trust is a good policy decision, especially if the people we're supposed to trust could just not be here tomorrow, that that's not the way forward to establish trust on this issue. You've heard great reasons about why we should use the right tool for the job, why we should have people with the right training to address the issues in a way that makes the client, in this case, receptive to those services, feel safe asking for them. The dissonance I am struck hereby is that it is cheaper. It is cheaper per call. We can be miserly and say that this is the right decision. We don't need to, I mean, I would like to do this if it was twice as expensive per call. It's not. It is fiduciarily irresponsible for you guys to move forward this quickly in the process. Not only would you have wasted the money on the report that you're not interested in utilizing, but your justification for further policing is entirely thrown out the window when you have a cheaper alternative, not just better, but cheaper alternative to reducing the cost of that call volume that we're, the nonviolent call volume. So, you know, I think you've heard some great reasons today, but if you want to save a few pennies, I mean, that's another good one that I think you guys might be more interested George Floyd, right, today even, we've got like Professor Oerlich out of Dartmouth, who said that when she said she couldn't breathe, the cop responded, yes, you can, you're talking to me, right? Obviously, we haven't learned that lesson in policing, not nationwide, not here. You have an opportunity today and in the next few weeks to make the right decision, or you can wait until we have another dead member of our community, because it will happen. I mean, if you keep putting police out on the streets and you don't give us alternative models, you're going to kill someone's kid.
My name is, hold on. My name is Evelyn Nittle. I've lived in and around Champaign-Urbana for pretty much my entire life, and I, shit, I'm so sorry. There, okay. And I'm here to speak against an increase of police staffing or any increase to the police budget. In 2019, the total police budget was approximately $9,570,000. And even in counting for inflation, this funding has increased dramatically since that time. Now it's $13,760,000. Despite this increase in funding, there have been repeated calls to reduce funding and to increase community options. This isn't a current issue or a current opinion. As I was doing the meager research I did to find those numbers, I found multiple articles highlighting the backlash from Urbana residents to each increase in police budget as the years were going on. Because we've also seen, because of the Barry Dunn report, that, well, another speaker pointed out, 73% of 911 calls are both not, are either noncriminal or nonviolent, and there's consistently been negative reactions to increased police budgets in Urbana. I wonder why we are choosing to propose or implement more budget increases, especially considering that crime has fallen dramatically in the last two years and continues to fall, especially violent crime here in Urbana. I feel that this increase or proposal for an increase is reactive, and it's directly in response to the increased presence of student protests on campuses. This is a university town. We have clear priorities. It's making our campus attractive and a viable option to parents to send their kids here. Give us a ton of money. We love it. But these protests are distracting, and I think that they probably scare a lot of the businesses around here. The police are going to, the purpose for increasing the budget right now is to protect the property and the commerce of Illinois, or central Illinois, Urbana, you know? But it's not to protect the people. I think that's something we have to remember, and I think that's why we have to keep coming and reminding you guys that we, your constituents, don't want to increase this budget. We want to decrease it as much as possible and fund alternatives. The idea of arming more people to fine an assault, me and my neighbors, is not comforting, and it doesn't make anybody safer. Please don't fund them more. Bye.
My name is Jada Fulcher. I've lived in and around Champaign-Urbana for going on six years now. I'm also a board member for the Community of Urbana-Champaign Cooperative Housing, which has several cooperative houses that often houses low-income people in and outside of Urbana, myself included. I wasn't planning on talking today. I was just listening on my phone, but I was in and around town, and I figured I'd pop in. I just wanted to kind of note one of the many reasons why I feel like we shouldn't be increasing the police budget. You've kind of already heard a lot, so I am not going to go into like data or anything like that, but I am going to go into something that I saw just like right outside the door, on that little TV that plays like those random static things that go over and over. And one of them was about the first phase of the Barry Dunn report, and it just says, well, the, in the third paragraph, it says, "This project, once fully complete, is intended to produce recommendations to guide the city's public safety operational practices and to help shape how the city provides community safety services now and in the future." And the report's not done yet, so I would love for us to like wait till the report is done to utilize those recommendations, just because we're not working with the full framework of what it's supposed to be giving us. And when you pay $235,000 for something, I feel like you kind of got to give it a chance. And I know that like the reports were supposed to have been come out, it's actually super behind. I looked at the Barry Dunn website, and it said that like, we're at least behind by like a phase or two on when they're supposed to have come out. There's like a whole, like, schedule that y'all can look up of when they were supposed to come out, which is wonky, I think. So I think we should be waiting until we and the community have all the information to make fully informed decisions, because I feel like that's all we really want here. We want to be able to have the data to be able to make our conclusions, and we want to be able to reach out to folks who know more than us, because we're not all going to know everything. And I don't think anyone here is claiming to know everything, but we want to be able, we don't want to be given the chance to know as much as we can before we make a decision that will cost us tax money, will cost the city millions of dollars, which is an amount of money that I simply can't conceptualize, because I make $14 an hour plus tips. But I think maybe if, this is an opportunity for maybe slower roll, really think on, like, taking a break, because when you pay this much money for something, you at least want to see it through, you know? We don't want to be in a position where we increase the police budget so much, and then it's like, whoopsie, there were all of these alternative models we could have utilized to make the community better, and now we don't have the money to do that, or now we have to raise taxes more, and we have to ask more from the people here. We don't want to put ourselves in that position. We don't want to put you in that position. So I think we could just not put ourselves in that position. And I could talk to you about like how policing has its history in slave patrols, or I could talk to you about the fact that the Barry Dunn report cites someone who doesn't think that I'm like a full person twice. It actually quotes someone who's like pro slavery, who is the father of modern-day policing. And I don't know if that's supposed to be aspirational or something, especially when we're looking at the fact that policing in this town has been heavily skewed in a way that negatively affects people who look like me. If you look at the force of the, not to talk about data, but if you look at the use of force data for 21 and 2021, 2022, because you can't find 2023, which I think is weird because it's like May. If you look at it by race, over, for 2021 and 2022, over 70% of use of force, any sort of use of force, is against an African-American, when we make up 18% of the population in Urbana. So I think that's weird. And so, but I could talk to you about race. Barry Dunn doesn't want to, but we could talk about race. But for right now, let's just take a little tiny break, because it sounds like a lot of people are really questioning why we're increasing the budget, when we spent so much money to decide whether or not we should increase the budget. So I feel like we could like circle back to this convo in like a year, and then have more information, and then hash it out then. That's all I got for you. Thank you, folks.
My name is Skylar Reeves-Stek. I'm a Champaign-Urbana resident. I've been here for my entire life, and I'm here to speak about the proposed budget assignment for the Urbana Police Department. I do not feel that we are experiencing a lack of police resources. I think what we're, what we have is police officers doing a lot of jobs that quite honestly do not require an armed officer. There have been many times when I wished I had someone to call, or in a time of crisis or of danger, but at none of those times have I felt like a police officer would be the right person for the job. Having seen the violence police are capable of and are expected to utilize on the very people who live in this city, I cannot call them and feel sure that somebody won't die or be brutalized because of that decision. I would very much urge us to look into alternative models for policing and community safety, and to see this Barry Dunn report to the end. Thank you.
My name is Becca Bachowski, and I'm a longtime Urbana resident. I'm also the executive director of a local nonprofit that is a service provider for people that are frequently in contact with the police or experiencing many of the types of situations that can often lead to interactions with the police. And in all of these conversations and in looking over the Barry Dunn report, I just kept thinking back to a conversation I had a number of years ago between myself and a number of police officers, as well as some other people kind of in the human service field in the community. And I remember the police officer that I was speaking to, and I believe he had some sort of supervisory role, essentially say to me like, you know, and he was very much in support of a community responder model. And what he said was like, "We basically have three options when we interact with somebody. We can do nothing. We can just kind of like talk and leave. We can take them to the hospital, or we can take them to jail." And then I've just been, that really struck me at the time, and I've thought about it many, many times since then. And then I think about my staff and the work that I do and the work that so many other human service professionals in town do, and I think every single one of those people would sort of look and be like, oh, my God, I have like a thousand more options of ways that I can respond to this situation, of resources at my disposal, based on not being in a situation that kind of ties me to those options and how to respond. And kind of in thinking through what the budget looks like, a lot of people have said, you know, a budget is a moral document, a budget like helps to decide where we go. And if the city of Urbana would like people to think about like the options that folks that are interacting with the police might experience, and have them be just those three things, then, then yes, then choosing to sort of fund more police makes sense. But if we're really looking at how to build community and how to sort of be able to respond to people in a, in a holistic way, and really address some of the issues that are at the core of the reasons people interact with the police, I think we do need to wait and think about the ways that we can apply that money to something that is really more in line with our values. The other thing I just kept thinking about was, and I know that I don't know the detailed ins and outs of how a police force work, but I do know how an organization works, and I do know the work that can be done by staff that are committed to a purpose or a mission. And I just sit back and think of the work that like my staff could do, and there's 16 of them, there's not that many, could do with, if 40% of their time was to just be in the community, responding to people who needed things, like the number of people who would find housing, and the number of people who would have a little bit more to eat, the number of people would like, who'd be able to go and like figure out how to get a new ID card, that's like the one thing that's kind of holding them back from being able to apply to something else. Like, these are, I mean, I don't know exactly that that's what these, what community responders would necessarily do, but I just, I think that those are the type of things that really can make a difference in people's lives, and those aren't the things that I see as being emphasized in the budget that you all are going to be presenting. So thank you for your time.
I'm James Kilgore, Urbana resident, and also a member of First Followers Reentry Program. I want to make about three points here. The first one is to just talk about the issue of obfuscation. In the 1990s, my job was to read World Bank reports and to translate them into language that ordinary people could understand, because World Bank reports were about the economic policy of African countries where I lived, right? And of course, the ordinary people in the community could not understand a word of these reports, because they were this thick, and they were written in language that was inaccessible to people. And I think the Barry Dunn report is a good example of that, where really the idea of these enormous, convoluted reports is to keep ordinary people from actually engaging with their contents and the implication of them. And then it was further illustrated by having this mammoth presentation of the report, which was also presented in a form and a style that was very much unacceptable to the people who are impacted by policing. So I feel like we're being kind of deceived, and thousands of tax dollars are being put into this process that really isn't about creating something that enables the population of the city to make a decision about something like policing. So I go with Minnie Pearson's suggestion that we have a public forum, but I think a public forum needs to have not only the chief of police there, but it needs to have people from the community there, and speaking as a representative of an organization where people have been seriously impacted by policing, where some of the people in First Followers have done 20, 30 years in prison, they have a different kind of understanding about policing than the rest of the population, but their voice needs to be heard in public forums. So, and the last thing I want to, the last point I want to make is that somebody has made before, and that is, I continue to be mystified why we spend so much time on policing when the poverty rate in Urbana is two and a half times the average poverty rate in Illinois, 27.7% in Urbana, 11% in Illinois. Why are we putting all of this energy into policing, and where is the energy going into solving the problem of poverty? Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address the council? Thank you for your input. We have a couple of emails. I have two that ask to be read into the record. The first one is from Adam, and then I have one from Lila. Okay. "As I look at the proposed budget, I have to ask myself, what problems are we trying to solve here with the proposed changes? If approved, this will mean we're spending 49% more on police than we did in 2019, yet the crime is comparable to what it was in 2019. What is increasing police spending by yet another million dollars plus intended to do what we haven't done in the previous increases? I understand it makes police happy to have more money, but what have the people gotten in return since 2019? It seems like whenever the UPD asks for more money, they're basically issued a blank check, despite this being deeply unpopular with the people of Urbana. Spending more money on police is one of the few issues that regularly draws significant public input. The proposed budget is telling us that policing our citizens is at least five times more important than social services. Instead of helping take care of people, the proposal is more police interactions. An alternative would be to return the police budget back to 2019 levels, use some of that extra money to invest in non-police community responders, which would lighten the load of service calls on police officers, and invest the remainder of it into social services. Another alternative would be hold off on increases in police spending until the complete Barry Dunn study comes back, or until a non-police community responder program is put into place to find out how many of the calls community responders could offload from police. Since the majority of emergency calls, UPD currently..." Since the majority of emergency calls UPD currently services are not for crimes, it seems like there's a large opportunity for a cheaper and more popular option. I want the city council to ask the question of what we're getting for our tax money. And I don't mean to explain it in terms of the number of people hired. I mean, ask how it will improve the lives of Urbannans." Thank you. And then the second email is from Lila Leopold. "As an Urbana resident, Ward 4, I urge the mayor and council to heed the call of your community members to pursue alternative community resources, including alternative responder models to provide care which increased spending on policing simply cannot supplant. I'm continually amazed by the number of organizations, coalitions, and partnerships across town which actively work to keep this community safe, fed, housed, nurtured, and inspired. As you all know, there are great and increasing needs to meet in Urbana, from the number of unhoused people to food insecurity and utility shut-offs, Cunningham Township, which should take precedent over any consideration to increase police budgets or hire more officers. Increased policing simply does not make sense. I write in strong opposition to the hiring of any new police officers or expansion of the police budget. I urge you again to see the big picture and put our money toward our community. This is the only viable path forward for the remnants of our democracy. Thank you for your consideration." Any other emails to read in? We did receive an email from Pastor Ricky Parks, which I would like to read into the record. "Dear City Council members, I'm writing to express my full support for Chief Larry Boone and his request for additional officers at the Urbana Police Department. As a nationally recognized chief leading UPD, Chief Boone has a proven track record of implementing community policing strategies that build trust between law enforcement and the communities they serve. Additional officers are critical not only for the safety of our hardworking police officers, but to allow UPD to fully realize the vision of authentic community policing. This approach directly addresses the social issues that undermine public safety by engaging those most impacted. It also helps alleviate any unwarranted fear residents have of police through compassionate interaction and relationship building. UPD is lucky to have a chief of Chief Boone's caliber and commitment to progressive constitutional policing. However, for his efforts to have their desired effect, he needs sufficient personnel. I urge you to support the chief and approve additional officers for UPD at your meeting this evening. Our community will be safer and stronger as a result. Please let me know if there's any way, other way I can voice support for this important initiative." And this is Pastor Parks from Pilgrim Missionary Baptist Church. We'll move on to council input and communication. Jaya?
Yeah, thank you. I want to start by expressing concern about deviation from the normal process for reading emails from, from members of the community. Generally speaking, we don't read emails unless they're specifically noted and asked to be read into the record, especially from individuals who don't live in the city of Urbana. And unfortunately, I feel like that has been indicative of my experience with this process related to public safety. Three years ago, some of us expressed concern about an initiative to start an alternate or sort of alternate response model, which was described as a crisis co-response model. That model would add follow-up services after the fact, usually the day after, which would involve a police officer and a social worker going out to respond to community members who met certain criteria. Some of us had concerns about why that model was being proposed, especially at a time when people were asking for something truly different, that there were concerns that that model, that when questioned, some of the participants about why that model should be implemented, that there was nothing to suggest that that model was appropriate for the city of Urbana. In response, some of the members of this council requested to earmark the funding that would have been meant to support that model, to do a study of alternate response models more broadly instead. That funding request was put in a non-binding portion of the city budget ordinance for that year so that the proposed model could go ahead despite a number of council members objecting to that model without further testing and exploration of other models that could be more effective. Now, regardless of, of the initial, initial reason for that model being put in place and it happening in that way, I understand that there has been some good that has come out of that model. But that is where the funding that has now gone to support the Barry Dunn study came from. It was a request to explore alternate response models and specifically the request for proposals was meant to state for community safety review through the lens of racial justice and social justice. I'm still waiting on that part of the Barry Dunn study. It has taken a lot longer than I would have hoped or expected, but I will say for myself, it is not done. There have been compromises and concessions that have been made along the way to make sure that we are being competitive with our surrounding area so that we can attract officers who are of the quality that we would want. We have taken significant steps to attract a leader who we believe will do things differently, which is what we have requested. I can confidently say for myself, and I believe is true for the council more broadly, that no promises in terms of what that different would look like were made. And I will say for myself, you know, we received this budget at the same time as the public and it's not done.
Jaya?
I'm sorry. Grace?
Thank you. How'd you know I wasn't going to say ditto on some of Jaya's things there? And always says things very, yes, yes, eloquently, reasonably. Thank you for that. Some of my things I did want to address was to thank everyone, the public, who's given us your input in person and over email and various forums. I did want to address something that was said here that I'm quick to bring up when people say this to me personally, but I don't know if I've had the opportunity to say on the record, so I'm happy to have that opportunity, that in my opinion, all Urbana residents have equal and the same rights to be heard and represented regardless of their home value and tax contribution and that public input and concerns are valuable regardless. For me, there's no express treatment. There's no VIP. There's no, you have a multimillion dollar house and pay more taxes, so you're entitled to special treatment. So, I just wanted to express that for myself and I hope that that is the attitude throughout the city. And then also just express agreement with not expanding police departments and looking for meaningful alternative responses of non-police community response. Thank you.
James?
Yeah. I wanted to make sure that residents of Ward 7 were aware of the Southeast Urbana Neighborhood Association meeting, annual meeting, which is going to be this Thursday at 7:00 PM at St. Matthew Lutheran Church. This is a longstanding event, annual event, which has had as many as 100 or more people attended, really satisfied of the engagement of Ward 7. They have consistently shown when there's open houses or opportunities to speak on what's going on in the community, they, they turn out and I hope to see many of them there on Thursday.
Any other council comments? Sharice?
I guess what, I kind of dovetailing on what Jaya was saying, in the, the previous city council, we had a model that we were trying to implement called One Door. And that did not go through basically, and yes, it was police-based, but we were also working with other, with other entities. And what we did get though was, were, was this. We were able, and we were very lucky to have a CRT unit that was actually police-based, but our police officer, she had a master's in social work. And she and other officers that went out often caught people between the cracks and did what they could to, to try to help them move on and move up and get help, whatever they could. So, just because someone is an officer doesn't mean that they stop being a human being because they often do help people in the community. And with all the statistics that I've heard tonight, I don't know that, how many of those actually apply to Urbana police force with what people are seeing. I just, I can only say what I've seen and I've, I was born and raised and went through Urbana schools and graduated from Parkland and went to U of I. And I've experienced, you know, had my one or two issues with police, but they were never harmful. They never were disrespectful even. But I will say this, since returning home and, and actually observing and being very observant, I've seen police officers help people get gas in their car. I've seen police officers pull over somebody because their car stopped and they were just getting them out of traffic. I don't know because I, I don't hang with a criminal element or, or anything like that. So, I don't know what other people's experiences are, if they are unfortunate enough to, to have grown up with that as their norm. My norm is I don't have a whole lot of interaction with police, to be honest, except to say, "Hi, how you doing?" And that's basically it. But I do know also that when it comes to who suffers the most when we don't have a, a force, it will be the people of color as well in this community and usually on my, in my ward.
Thank you, Sharice. Any other council member wish to say something?
I do have a couple of clarifications I'd like to make. First of all, the mayor of Urbana does not make over a six-figure salary. It's about $75,000 a year. So, there's that. Secondly, one of the speakers referred to a, the proposed increase in social service funding from the current $100,000 to $300,000. That is one of our programs and it was the youth services grant program where we take applications and fund various community organizations. It's not the only social service expenditures in Urbana. And frankly, when you look at the amount, the millions and millions of dollars spent countywide on social services, that also has to be taken into account. Those services are also available to city of Urbana residents in a lot of ways. And then you add to that the township funding as well. And we can, we're going to take a deeper look at, try to compile, get to a bigger picture of the dollars available for social service funding to Urbana residents, but coming from various sources. Secondly, including our own ARPA funding, which is an investment of about $10 million in organizations, 25 different organizations in the community, all of which provide social services of some sort. Thirdly, the crisis co-response team that we have had operating for the past two and a half years is composed of, or was composed until recently of one police officer who holds a master's degree in social work. And she partnered with a social worker that was paid for and actually works for Rose Grants. Rose Grants obtained a federal grant that paid for this social worker. That funding ends on June 30th of this year for the social worker that has been dedicated to Urbana and we're picking up the funding for that. So, in whatever form the next partnership looks like. But anyway, the crisis co-response team was paid for through a federal grant for a social worker and then they partnered with a police officer who's now a behavioral health detective and actually was in the news a couple of days ago for addressing successfully a situation where a woman with a knife was de-escalated and successfully, her situation resolved. And fourth, I'm hearing a lot about the 73% of the calls for service are nonviolent. I'm not sure where that number came from. The Barry Dunn report categorized 63% of cumulative calls for service as service calls. Included in that amount were calls for domestic incidents. That's the single biggest call for service in that service category. And as we all know, domestic incidents can be some of the most unpredictable, potentially dangerous calls that a police officer, a social worker, or anyone can go to. And so, that is, the 73%, I'm not even sure where that number came from, but the Barry Dunn report said 63%. And it's a very broad category. Okay. We'll move on to unfinished business. There is none. And we'll move into reports of standing committees. Sharice?
Okay. From the previous committee of the whole meeting, I'm moving for approval by city council consent agenda. Consent agenda is, has a resolution number 2024-05-028R, a resolution approving the city of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium, Champaign-Urbana, Champaign County, FY 2024, 2025, Annual Action Plan, C, from Community Development. Resolution number 2024-05-029R, a resolution approving amendment number one to an Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement, Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, Housing Navigation Program, Home ARP-FY 2021, 2022, also from Community Development. A resolution number 2024-05-030R, a resolution approving amendment number one to an Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement, CU&amp;Home LLC, Housing Navigation Program, Home ARP-FY 2021, 2022, from Community Development. Resolution number, see, number, resolution number 2024-05-031R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement to share costs for use of a GPS survey-based station, Public Works. Ordinance number 2024-05-020, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 21, Section 24 to 49, reimbursement for sanctuary repairs, also from Public Works.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Jaya. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu? Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
From the regular agenda, we have ordinance number 2024-04-018, an ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter 14, Section 14, dash, seven, regarding the schedule of fees, July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. And what is that? Human Resources, Human Relations?
Human Resources and Finance.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by James. Any discussion? Grace?
Did we hear any input during the time that this was available for public review?
Elizabeth can answer that. Elizabeth Hannan, Finance Director.
I, I didn't receive anything.
Any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Sharice. Next item is reports of special committees. There are none. We'll move on to reports of officers. And these reports will consist of an introduction to the budget with an overview and then presentations on social service funding and the comprehensive plan. The library budget director, the library director has asked that she be given the opportunity to present next week instead. So, we'll hear from Community Development Executive Department and we'll begin with a overview and introduction of the budget. And actually, I'm going to start that. With us is City Administrator Carol Mitten and HR Finance Director Elizabeth Hannan. So, this is a message for those of us in the room and also for the community at large. Tonight, we're presenting the proposed fiscal year 2024. Tonight, we're presenting the Proposed Fiscal Year 2025 Annual Budget. And for the next few weeks, you'll hear presentations from departmental leadership that focus on key points in their budget requests. And I have to say, this is a tough moment for me. On one hand, as I look back on the last seven years, I'm very proud. I'm optimistic. I'm proud of the progress we've made as a community. I'm optimistic for the future. Because this budget document demonstrates the strong financial foundation that we've built over the past seven years, as well as a framework that's now in place for more effective and more efficient city government. The moment is also bittersweet for me, because this is the last budget that I'll present to you as mayor of the city of Urbana. So I wanted to take a moment to look back, and I hope you'll indulge me in that, because I think it's important to see where we've come and how far we've come. And this is a very transient community. So some people have lived here for a long time, but I know many, many others are new here. And I think it's important to see where we've come from and understand that each budget builds on the past. So budgets do reflect who we are as a community, and I just wanted to share some of the highlights of that journey. So I wanted to start by taking this opportunity to thank city staff, elected officials with whom I've served. Thanks to their unrelenting hard work, discipline, and thoughtful policy decisions made internally and in this chamber, we eliminated a $2.5 million structural budget deficit. We restored pension funding to responsible levels. We rebuilt the city's financial reserves. We currently carry virtually no debt, and thus, we're in a strong position to finance construction of much-needed public infrastructure needs. During the COVID-19 pandemic, we joined with community partners to reduce the spread of disease, protect the capacity of the local healthcare system, and to support our residents and local businesses, and we're doing that today. We modernized many internal systems. We updated major parts of our city code, such as the alcoholic liquor, that's an entire chapter in our city code, and the land development code. We implemented a new financial system, adopted online platforms for procurement, rental registration, work order processing, and proposal submission. We started a monthly newsletter to better communicate, better share information with the community. We'll be launching an entirely new city website later this year. We're rewriting the comprehensive plan, and it's from a holistic, community-informed perspective. A major priority over the last few years has been to tackle the maintenance and management of our $1.8 billion public infrastructure system. We've assessed the condition of city-owned assets, developed management plans for each system, along with creating a 10-year master facilities plan. I believed it was very essential to have this data to inform the annual capital improvement plan that's reflected in our annual budgets each year. Not only have we developed these plans, but we are systematically implementing them to tackle the backlog of infrastructure needs. And this is something that is different from in the past. We were very good at making plans in the past, but not as successful in implementing many of them. And I wanted to change that. Since the master's facility plan was approved in 2020, we've built the citywide vehicle and equipment storage building. We remodeled City Hall to upgrade public service areas, improve signage, reconfigure office space, and improve ADA, life safety, and security features. And next month, we'll break ground on two new fire stations to replace the stations on North Lincoln Avenue and South Philo Road. The bids for these stations are on budget. We've exceeded goals for minority and women participation as contractors, and they will be built with 100% union labor. Work is now underway for Phase Two of our master facilities plan. One thing our financial recovery has given us the resources that we needed, and particularly following the murder of George Floyd, we are committed to looking at things through a lens of equity and accessibility. And that includes our public infrastructure. One of the innovative programs I'm most proud of is our Equity and Quality of Life Program. It's called Equal. We took a different approach and asked residents in historically underserved neighborhoods, basically the community development block grant neighborhoods, to tell us what types of smaller-scale infrastructure projects would make their neighborhood lives better, and their lives better. Things like sidewalks, streetlights, ramps, landscaping. Throughout the application process, we listened to the community and responded with $2 million worth of funding for about 10 smaller-scale neighborhood projects. The first round of Neighborhood Equal Projects will be completed this year, and this budget before you today contains another round of equal funding through the Capital Improvement Plan. And the last portion of our shared history and our journey that's reflected in this budget that I want to highlight tonight is both the process that we followed to allocate $10 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds, known as ARPA, and the transformative projects that you all chose. And I don't think you'll find a more thoughtful, effective, and accountable process anywhere in this country. And I've talked to a lot of mayors over the last couple of years and learned what they did. And ours is second to none. Nor will you find a more impactful set of projects that are supported by this one-time COVID relief funding than the ones that are underway in Urbana right now. And these ongoing ARPA expenditures are reflected in our budget today. Under the guidance of the Regional Planning Commission, we identified priority funding areas such as housing, food, health and wellness, job training and education, youth and family services, and local business support, all of which help strengthen youth and families, address health needs, and support recovery from the pandemic. And just to remind us, these allocations included $2 million for the Urbana Park District's Health and Wellness Center, over $814,000 for the Urbana School District's Alternative Education Center, Tiger Academy, $500,000 for renovation of Steer Place, which is run by the Champagne County Housing Authority, $850,000 for the Tiny Homes Project for the chronically homeless and medically fragile population, $750,000 for the Strides Homeless Shelter, serving all of Champagne County, and $1.3 million for the Pilot Sewer Lateral Lining Program in the Dr. Ellis subdivision. Other significant allocations included $658,000 to Cunningham Township to fill gaps in housing and homeless services, and $500,000 to Champagne County healthcare consumers for health and housing needs. And $150,000 for the 26-acre Solio Gracia Farm, which is within city limits, and it's a 26-acre farm, which helps address food insecurity in the community. In total, there's 25 ARPA-funded infrastructure and social service projects in the budgets that we had last year, this year, and the coming up year. And I think it's something that we can all be very proud of, and I thank you for doing it. I just wanted to make a couple of other points in my introduction to this budget, and then I'll turn it over to Carol and Elizabeth. First of all, I wanted to focus on how we will approach making decisions about the final budget. I know a lot of people in the community have already formed opinions, but they have not yet heard context for the budget requests, particularly related to the Police Department budget. So I'm asking you, as the community, to listen to the context and the reasoning presented for these requests over the next couple of weeks. I caution against framing the proposed public safety discussion as having to make a choice between hiring several more sworn police officers or hiring non-sworn alternative responders. We need both components for true community policing and an effective alternative response. We have the resources to do both. What's also important for the community to know is that the Phase One of the Public Safety Review, completed by the consultants Barry Dunn, concluded that Urbana Police Department is currently understaffed on patrol officers for the volume of obligated workload they receive, even if some calls are diverted to non-sworn alternative response models. Every one of the six Urbana Police Chiefs I have worked with since 2004, that's 20 years, has said the same thing regarding our patrol staff. The consultants also noted that UPD needed some additional patrol staffing to provide capacity for meaningful community engagement services. And that's one thing I want to focus on before I turn this over. Today, in Urbana, on a typical shift, there are four to five patrol officers on duty covering the entire city. If we have a serious event, like the shooting on Vodder Street a few days ago, all patrol officers on duty may respond to that scene, leaving no one on patrol in the rest of the city. Following the murder of George Floyd in 2020, many police departments around the country, in Illinois and across the country, formed community engagement teams as one response, often by reassigning officers from patrol or other duties to form community engagement teams to build better community relationships. Urbana wasn't able to do that because our staffing was so lean. It's not that we didn't want to do it. We simply didn't have anybody available to assign to that task. It would mean pulling people off patrol, leaving even fewer officers on the street. We did make important changes that didn't require additional staffing. We adopted the NAACP's 10 Shared Principles. We worked with the NAACP of Champagne County and the ACLU to rewrite the Urbana Police Department's use-of-force policy to prioritize life. City Council approved funding for extra training and de-escalation, and UPD received a grant for training in active bystandership. And as we noted, we partnered with Rosecrans to stand up the Crisis Co-Response Team with a social worker funded by Rosecrans and a sworn Urbana officer who also holds an MSW. And they have been responding as a follow-up model for the past two and a half years. And we want that to continue, and we can provide some more information on the summary of what they've done. People often use Evanston as an example. I've heard Bloomington, Illinois, as examples of effective community engagement. I agree, they're doing great things. Evanston has a community engagement team. They have a community policing team. We met last week with the head of the community engagement team from the Bloomington, Illinois Police Department, and we hope to draw on their experience there. I think they're doing terrific things in those cities. But Urbana Police Department won't be able to assign officers to any meaningful or community engagement unless we have enough officers to cover regular patrol duties. And that's what this budget attempts to address as we go forward. So the funding requested by Police Chief Larry Boone in this budget, I believe, represents a step forward toward true community policing and an alternative responder model. This budget contains funding requests for several additional patrol officers, sworn community engagement officers for a true community engagement team, and non-sworn community service representatives, including the social worker. Details will be provided next week in the UPD's budget presentation. We have a number of experienced Urbana Police Officers who are excited about the transition to a full-fledged community policing approach. And several of the new officers that I've sworn in over the past year told me they applied to UPD specifically because they believe in this model and this approach and are eager to be part of this new effort. So I look forward to hearing the presentations next week. And at this point, I want to thank, or turn this over to HR Finance Director Elizabeth Hannan and City Administrator Carol Mitten. And they'll continue with the financial overview. And then they'll be followed by the budget presentations by Community Development for specifically on the social service funding and an update on the comp plan. Thank you.
So I'm just going to touch quickly kind of on our big-picture economic and financial outlook here. So as you know, having the university in our community brings a great deal of stability that benefits us. The university also provides a flash index, which tells us basically how the Illinois economy is doing. And that was at 103 in April, which indicates that we have a growing Illinois economy. Inflation has moderated. Current CPI is about 3.5%. And unemployment is about 4.3%. We did see, as you know, a 7% decrease in our population in the 2020 census, which we will hopefully address through the special census that's upcoming. One area of concern is that the Housing Price Index has increased by nearly 37% since the first quarter of 2020. Also, something to be aware of, and I'm not sure if the House took action on the state budget today or not, but the Senate passed the state budget with the elimination of the 1% grocery tax that goes to municipalities across the state. In the Senate version, that was deferred until January of 2026. I don't know what happened in the House today. I wasn't keeping track. I was seeing my grandson graduate high school. So I would say, even despite some of the concerns, we're in a much better place financially than we have been in a long time, certainly much better than we were last year. Not that there are not concerns, but we're in a, I would say, a comfortable position right now. So with that, I'm going to give it to Carol to talk through some of the recommendations in the budget, and then we'll come back a little bit later and talk about financial details.
Thank you. So just to hit the, highlight the takeaways before I go into some more detail, and this builds on what the mayor was saying. The large investment that you see in public safety reflects the city's investment at the council's direction in conducting a community safety review through the lens of racial equity and social justice. And while we might not have all the answers yet, we know the direction that we want to go in. And from our perspective, it's time to start moving in that direction with incremental funding. These proposals continue to support the Mayor Council's strategic goals and identified strategic areas of public safety and well-being, housing, infrastructure, and economic health. Our goal continues to be to maintain the services that the city provides to the community while incrementally expanding others, like alternative response, housing inspections, and nuisance abatement. And then finally, there are a couple of requests that will continue the city's investment in strategic priorities, such as the housing study and the equity plan. So before I address the specific major request for funding to promote public safety and well-being, I want to remind everybody of the scope of work for the Barry Dunn Study, because there have been, in the last few weeks, there have been some commentary recently that Barry Dunn is not delivering the work product that they were contracted to provide, and I wanted to clarify that. So in the summary section of the RFP, we indicated that, quote, "The intent is to reconsider the traditional roles of public safety departments, specifically police and fire, as well as other city departments. The goal is to promote community safety and well-being in ways that minimize harm related to race, poverty, and other social factors," end quote. We specifically scoped a comprehensive staffing study for police and fire, saying, quote, "In order to properly review alternative models, it is essential that the quantitative and qualitative features of the current public safety model in Urbana is understood," end quote. In developing alternative models, the RFP says that, quote, "This phase will result in the presentation of multiple options from other jurisdictions with practices that differ from Urbana, either in staffing assignments, levels of resources, departmental responsibility, and so on, in ways that are explicitly intended to mitigate harm to vulnerable populations based on race, income level, et cetera," end quote. Nowhere in the scope of work do we explicitly say that we were seeking models that eliminated police involvement in responding to calls for service. Rather, we were focused on improving outcomes for our whole community, and that remains our focus today. The mayor is proposing to increases to baseline staffing in both the police and fire departments. This reflects the Barry Dunn findings and is supported by our police and fire chiefs. In each case, the overall goal is to have staffing at a level whereby our first responders are able to respond to calls for service from the community in a manner that improves the likelihood of good outcomes. Adequate staffing allows enough people to cover the calls, allows for appropriate training for the responders, reduces overtime, which is both more expensive and takes a toll on the responders themselves, and provides enough time for the responders to spend time at the scene in whatever manner circumstances dictate. In the case of the police department, the request is for five new officers, broken down this way. One is to backfill the second deputy police chief. One would be to backfill a position to create a new dedicated training sergeant, and three new patrol officers. For the fire department, it means creating five new positions to allow us to retain most of the safer grant positions for which funding expires in February 2025. In order to begin to incorporate alternative response, the mayor is proposing to fund two types of civilian positions for a total of three new FTEs in the police department. Two positions would be focused on the primary type of calls that the Barry Dunn Report mentioned for community service responders, that is, calls of noncriminal nature, vehicle crashes, special events, and so on. There's a single additional position to respond to calls that would benefit from an individual with specialized training, like a social with specialized training, like a social worker. We have costed the social worker at a higher salary than is typical for multiple reasons. One is that this person would need to be specially trained to go on these kinds of calls, and another is that not every social worker would be willing to go into potentially volatile situations. We may need to pay more to attract a person with the right disposition to do this kind of work. The mayor is also proposing to fund the community engagement team that you have heard about from Chief Boone as a three-year pilot. You will also hear more about this initiative from Sergeant Matt McKenney and Dr. LaShonda Cunningham, who have been working with the chief to develop this proposal when they present next week. The overarching goal of this unit would be to improve the relationship between the police and the community, to restore trust where it is missing, and to reinforce trust where it already exists. This is something quite different than addressing demand generated by calls for service, which was specifically explored by Barry Dunn. This would be a unit dedicated to creating the kind of environment where co-production policing is possible, which is part of 21st century policing and is also discussed in the Barry Dunn report, but not in the Calls for Service section. This unit would be comprised of three sworn officers and operate out of an office in the Philo Road area, and again, this would be a three-year pilot. And also to further public safety and well-being, the mayor proposes to add $200,000 to the social service funding allocation for FY25, bringing the total to $300,000 for the upcoming year. And as the mayor mentioned, the programs that the council voted on to use ARPA dollars under this, you know, public safety and well-being will continue to receive their allocations in the upcoming fiscal year. We recognize that there can be a connection between public safety and well-being and the quality of housing in a neighborhood. The mayor is proposing to add another code compliance inspector to rental housing. We currently have two inspectors for almost 2,600 rental properties operating on a six-and-a-half year cycle. With an additional inspector, we can improve that so properties are inspected on average every 4.3 years. We are also increasing the funds used for nuisance abatement in the amount of $20,000, which would see that program through the entire year, instead of running out of money, which typically happens. We are also long overdue for a comprehensive housing study in Urbana, and the mayor is proposing to spend $50,000 for this purpose. Right now, we operate off of largely anecdotal information about gaps in the type of housing in Urbana. This study would examine supply and demand for housing types across the spectrum of affordability, including market rate housing, and that would help guide future planning and investments. I also wanted to just note in this category what Braden mentioned last week when he was presenting the annual action plan, and that is that Urbana's allocations for CDBG and home funding are down about 21% for the upcoming fiscal year. We have ample balances in these funds, as he mentioned, so that there won't be any shortfalls for the next year or two, but if these lower funding levels continue, other sources of funding may need to be identified. Most of the infrastructure investments that are proposed for FY25 are in the capital improvement plan, which has been discussed and voted on in recent meetings by the council. I do want to highlight an important takeaway from the asset management section of the CIP, and that is, we are underfunding the city's infrastructure needs to the extent of about $20 million every year. That's underfunding $20 million. The only tax increase that's proposed in either this budget, the operating budget, or the CIP, is a 5-cent increase in the local motor fuel tax rate, which was incorporated in response to a Mayor Council strategical action item. So I think that's significant. We're not proposing any tax increases at this time, besides the one I just mentioned. We are currently reaping the benefits of increased engineering staff in Public Works, which will allow us to support the construction of two new fire stations, which we've talked about quite a lot in recent meetings, and that's as well as keeping our other projects on schedule in much more timely manner than we have been able to in the past. And with other categories of funding, the ARPA projects will continue to receive their funding allocations during the upcoming year, and as the mayor mentioned, 10 equal projects will be completed this year. The city's economic development focus for the next fiscal year will continue to be downtown. We will focus on the lighter, quicker, cheaper, public realm installations that you've been briefed about in the past. We look forward to getting some proposals for the Illinois street lots in the next couple of months, and we have extended that closing date to July 15th. Early next year, we also anticipate an influx of employees downtown when the county moves into County Plaza. We have high hopes that the Hotel Royer will be open before the calendar year is over, which, as we've discussed before, is an important catalyst for downtown businesses and activities. H Mart is now under construction and is expected to open later this year or early next year, and this will be an exciting addition to our downtown and a good attraction for students to come to downtown Urbana. We have requested funding necessary to complete Imagine Urbana, our new comprehensive plan, which I'll explain in more detail during the separate presentations right after this one. And we've also included the minimum revenue guarantee of $50,000 for Willard Airport that the council approved in February. And then I will, on this last slide, for me, I will also touch on some other significant proposals that are contained in the mayor's budget. This budget includes a proposal to try and right-size the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund, the VERF. As you know, vehicles in general got more expensive during and post-COVID. However, most of the entries in the VERF predate that time and lag the actual amounts needed to replace those vehicles. So the mayor is proposing a one-time correction of $1.95 million and an accompanying recurring amount of $300,000. Next year, another recurring amount of $150,000 will be needed to account for the full extent of the one-time adjustment, but that is to capture all of those increases in order to replace our vehicles on schedule. We propose to add both a new position in IT to provide better support services and to convert the management analyst position from limited term to permanent. That position will be invaluable if we want to sustain any of the analysis that was performed by Barry Dunn for police and fire departments on an ongoing basis, as well as other analytics that the management analyst has been supporting in the time that he's been with us. There are two new software proposals totaling about $100,000. One would be for Office 365, which is much anticipated by our staff, and one for a new asset management system for Public Works. And the mayor proposes to include funding for the Office of Human Rights and Equity to prepare a city equity plan, which is one of the action items from the Mayor Council goals, and to provide on-call interpreter services for non-English speakers. Now I'll send it back to Elizabeth to hear about the big picture for revenue and expenses that are reflected in the budget.
So just to note before I launch into this, when we look at some of these charts, some of them are for all city funds and some of them are for general fund alone. When we look at charts that include all funds, we do not include transfers between funds so that we're not double counting. So sometimes you might see in one place, general fund looks like one number, in another place, it's a different number, just depending on whether we're looking at that fund alone. So the chart you're looking at now shows total revenues for all funds. Total revenues of $81.4 million in fiscal year '25, which is 7.8 million higher than for FY24. That increase is primarily due to increases in state and federal grant funds, including grants for construction of two new fire stations and plans to issue debt in relation to the fire stations. About $43 million, or 53% of total revenues, are in the general fund, and as you know, the general fund provides for most of our basic city services, so virtually all of the police department, the fire department, most of Public Works. Let's see, in FY24, we've seen sales tax and related revenues in the general fund perform better than we had initially projected. As a result, the FY24 estimates have been revised upward to reflect that increase. So we always like to take a look at the property tax pie chart here. So this shows the breakdown of taxes for most properties in the city of Urbana. As you can see on the pie, the city's portion of the property tax revenues is about 12%, but only 21% of the city's tax levy, which you see in the bar on the right side, actually goes to the general fund to pay for city services. So that's about 3% of the tax bill in total that a homeowner would pay. Of the city's portion, the largest part goes to the library at about $4.1 million, or 40% of the total, closely followed by police and fire pensions at $3.9 million, or 38% of the total city tax levy. Also, going back to the pie, the school district is responsible for about 54% of total property taxes, and then other taxing districts, such as Park District, Parkland College, Township, make up the balance. So looking at expenditures for all funds by department, what you can see is the largest share of the budget is Public Works at almost 35%. That includes expenditures for capital improvements, and that can vary quite a bit from year to year, just depending on what we have happening in terms of infrastructure improvements. Community development is about 21%, police is about 17%, then followed by fire, which is about 11%. There's also a piece on there called General Services, and I just want to explain that. That's a little more than 7%. That includes expenditures in the VERF and the retained risk fund. There are expenditures that can't be attributed just to one department. So then looking at expenditures for all funds by classification, you might notice that in fiscal year '24, we have higher capital spending compared to the other years included on this chart. That's due in part to the timing of encumbering funds for major projects such as construction of fire stations. We've awarded the bid for that, so those funds are encumbered and they're included in the current budget. FY24 and '25 are also big years for spending on services. That's largely due to grants that are awarded by the city, some of which were funded through ARPA. Also, although our home and CDBG allocations have decreased, we'll still be spending and drawing on awards from earlier years. So total expenditures in FY25, $84.8 million. 44% of that is for personnel, which is not really surprising since it's city employees who make things happen. That includes salaries, benefits, contributions to pension plans. So then focusing on the general fund, we see total revenues of about $43 million, and you can see on this chart, it's a little, it's busy, right? There's a lot of slices in that pie, and that's because the general fund relies on a wide variety of revenue sources. State and home real sales tax and use tax revenues are the biggest piece of the pie at about 32%. That's down from 34% last year, and that's largely related to elimination of $1 million in grocery tax revenue in the state budget. Because that's now going to be delayed, we'll probably make an adjustment when we approve the final budget. We didn't know that until just very recently. That's followed by income tax, which is a little over 14%, and then property tax at 13%. That seems high, but that is because all of the police and fire revenues for the pension fund were required to account for those by passing them through the general fund. So they come in as revenue, and then they go right back out generally within, actually, a day. So looking at general fund expenditures by classification, again, you can see, and it's even more evident here, that personnel is the largest part of the budget. Personnel costs are about 62% of expenditures in the general fund. The large increase in transfers you see there in the purple is mainly related to additional support for the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund, which Carol mentioned, and that's a significant increase, again, $1.95 million in one-time funds and $300,000 recurring. Also, it includes additional transfers for capital improvement projects, so there's additional $3 million transfer to support the fire station construction. So the next couple of slides really go to how we determine whether we have a balanced budget, and as you know, in our financial policies, we have a couple of key metrics that you've heard me talk about over and over when we do the forecast, when we do the budget every year. So the metric that we're looking at here is the balance between recurring revenue and recurring expense in the general fund. Our policy goal in the financial policies is that recurring expenditures should be at no more than 98.5% of recurring revenues, and looking at this comparison, the percentage doesn't appear here, but it is almost exactly 98.5%. So in terms of our policy limit, we've kind of, we've reached the point where, based on our policies, I would not recommend additional recurring expenditures beyond what we have in the proposed budget. Another key metric that we use is looking at fund balance, and our policy goal is to maintain 25% of recurring expenditures as fund balance in the general fund. And the reason for that is, it allows us to predictably provide services to residents even when things happen, like we have a recession, which we know happens from time to time, or other things like natural disasters, like a tornado. It's also, having a strong fund balance is also a key component of how people, other outside entities evaluate the city's financial condition. So since we've talked about issuing debt for the fire stations, the banks that look at purchasing that debt are going to be considering that healthy fund balance and may offer some more attractive interest rate on the debt. So you can see on here, the 25% policy is the orangish line that's going across there. In the FY25 proposed budget, the estimated ending fund balance is $17 million. 5.3% of that is assigned for future expenditures. It was either identified in the capital improvement plan as transfers to fund capital improvements in future years, or the other piece of that is, since the mayor has proposed a three-year community engagement team pilot program, that's reserving the second and third years that would be required for that, for that program. So not including that assigned portion that's in green on the chart, our ending fund balance would be about $11.7 million, which is 26.1% of recurring expenditures, so just a tiny little bit, barely over our policy goal. So looking ahead just quickly, I think our disciplined approach has paid off. We're in a good position. We are able to expand services this year without requiring new revenues in the general fund. However, we likely don't have capacity to continue to expand services in the future without new revenues. So looking at the process here, tonight, we're looking at the budget overview, and the mayor already mentioned that rather than seeing the library budget tonight, you will see that next week. So then we'll talk about social service funding and some comp plan-related requests. Next week, on June 13, we'll be talking about, oh, sorry, June 3, it's getting late, police staffing and hiring incentives, continuing some of the SAFER grant firefighters and also fire training, staffing increase in IT and software upgrades, the housing code inspector, and VERF funding. We will have time on June 10 if we have remaining items, if there's something we don't get to, or if there's something else that council wants more information on. And then on the 17, sorry, we will bring the ordinances. So normally, we have the budget ordinance, and we have an amendment to the current budget that will be in committee that night, and we'll also hold a public hearing on the 17. The notice for the public hearing was published- The notice for the public hearing was published in the News Gazette today, just in conformance with state law and requirements in the city code. Then, June twenty-fourth, we would adopt the budget and approve the budget amendment that you'll see in committee. So, just as a reminder, we operate under what's called the Budget Act in state law, so we are required to adopt a budget before the beginning of the fiscal year, unlike some other units of local government that operate under the appropriations type of budgeting. Adoption of the budget requires five of eight votes, unlike a budget amendment, which, as you know, requires a supermajority, six of eight votes. I would also ask, I know that there may be, as we go through discussions, some proposals to make changes, to remove or add things, just so that we can kind of keep tabs on those. It would be very helpful if we could do an informal poll if there's something that looks like it has traction, so then that tells me that, yes, we need to include that change in the budget ordinance. So, with that, happy to answer questions.
Thank you. So, thank you for the presentation, Elizabeth. At the November fourteenth, 2022 Special Committee of the Hole Meeting, you said, quote, "As we had previously discussed, I think when we talked about the forecast last year and we presented the budget this year, we know that revenue increases are in our future. They are going to be needed to maintain city services," end quote. In a meeting on April twenty-fifth, 2023, with Alderperson Wu and I, you proposed new tax increases to pay for permanent staffing increases in the fire department and the police department, suggesting the following options: a raise in the home rule sales tax, a raise in the package liquor tax, a raise in the hotel motel tax, a raise in the property tax rate, a new amusement tax on streaming services, a new self-storage rental tax, a new real estate transfer tax, a new cigarette tax, and then some taxes to support transportation. In the fiscal year 2024-2028 financial forecast, you wrote on page fourteen, under recommended strategies, quote, "Given the significant needs identified in this report, it is likely that revenue increases will be required," end quote. On page fifteen of the financial forecast, you wrote, as the second recommended strategy, quote, "Plan for revenue increases. Staff will continue to refine estimates for potential new general fund revenue resources with the understanding that revenue increases will likely be necessary to support new expenditures at some point," end quote. At the December eleventh, 2023 City Council meeting, you said, during the financial forecast presentation of the third PowerPoint slide, quote, "I think our needs probably exceed what we're going to be able to fund, so there may be some need to talk about revenue increases, but timing on that would be dependent on when the city council elects to do certain expenditure increases," end quote. During the presentation of the tenth PowerPoint slide, you said, quote, "So quickly talking about planning for revenue increases, so, Ali pointed out that gap between growth and reoccurring revenue and expenditure. Eventually, at some point, regardless of whether we were to add new expenditures, we would need to address this," end quote. The tenth PowerPoint slide lists a number of tax increase options, and upon further questioning, you acknowledged that an increase in the property tax rate and the home rule sales tax rate were some of those options, too. So my question is, finally, what's changed?
So, remember when you looked at that pie chart for general fund revenues? So I'm going to say, I think I've always said, I can't predict the future, right? We use reasonable assumptions, and we try to paint a picture of what we think the future might look like, but I can't actually predict the future. So, but I did mention, so you look at the pie chart for the general fund, there are lots of different revenue sources, and each one of those is kind of a moving target. But I think I also mentioned earlier in this presentation that we had better performance than expected on sales tax revenues this year. We've also had better performance than expected on investment income, so those are two significant things that have changed.
Okay. Isn't it the case that at the time you were recommending raising taxes, you didn't know the cost of the two fire stations, right?
So I wouldn't say that we ever made a specific recommendation. The purpose of conversations we had in relation to revenues was to kind of put some options out there, and I think, you know, get feedback, but I didn't ever recommend those specific increases. It was, here's some things we might need to do.
We might need to do.
Right.
Okay. So, do you know what the cost of the fire stations are going to be?
I believe the construction, something like fourteen million?
Well, what the Director of Public Works wrote me in a May sixth email was that fourteen point four million is the construction cost, 1.2 million is the design fees, 2.3 million is the interest, and 1.2 million is the property tax, coming to a total of nineteen point one million.
There's no property tax.
No, property.
No, 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 I'm sorry, property purchase. I'm sorry, property purchase. So 1.2 million in the property purchase, so it comes to, what Tim said was, it's nineteen point one million tax dollars. Does that sound familiar?
Correct. I gave him that chart that had the nineteen point one million on it.
You gave him the chart, okay, good. So isn't it also the case, when you were recommending tax increases, you didn't know the governor of Illinois would be repealing the grocery tax, right?
Correct.
How much is that going to affect the budget?
About a million dollars. It's hard to know exactly.
Okay. So I need you to explain this so that even an idiot like Chris Evans can understand this. So I want you to imagine that you're talking to the idiot Chris Evans. How can we be spending more money than when you were recommending we raise taxes? And now, even though we're spending more money with less revenue, now we don't need to raise taxes?
So I'll say again, every year, the budget is kind of a moving target. The general fund is particularly complex. We have a whole bunch of revenue sources. Each of them has to be evaluated individually, and things change. We can't always predict expenditures accurately either. I mean...
So have you been told to stop talking about the need to raise taxes and associating that need with hiring more police officers?
No, I haven't been told that. I just, I just, I mean, my, I hope, expert opinion is that it's not necessary this year. My opinion at this point in time is that if we want to do more than we have included in this budget, it will be necessary in the future.
Okay, so by us not raising taxes now, we're just kicking the can down for the next mayor and the next council?
No, I wouldn't say that. I mean, this is a balanced budget based on the city's financial policies. If you want to do the things in this budget, right, and never do more, then it's probably sustainable. But, but again, everything in the general fund is a moving target. It's very complex.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Yeah, I just have a simple question. I was hoping, and I know we'll get the presentation about staff, some of the staffing stuff next week, but in, on Roman numeral six in the budget, it says baseline fire EMS response staffing is adequate provided the city retains most of the SAFER staff, so not increasing, but then it was stated in this overview that we would be looking at increasing. That sounds like sustaining, not increasing, the fire staffing.
I'm not sure what, when you say Roman numeral six, what are you looking at?
In the budget, on page Roman numeral six. It talks about basically sustaining or maintaining the majority of the staff that were hired under the SAFER grant, but there was a, in this overview, it was described as increasing, but it sounds like sustaining or maybe at least potentially even slightly decreasing.
No, I see what you're saying, and it probably, it depends on how you think about it. So, up until this proposed budget, the SAFER firefighters were considered a one-time expense. They were completely grant-funded, and the assumption was that in the future, they would either go away through attrition, most likely, or we would choose to incorporate that into our budget, but that decision hadn't been made, so we're treating that as a one-time expense. What we're saying here is, that's no longer a one-time expense. Five of those SAFER firefighters are now going to be a recurring expense that we've absorbed within that ninety-eight point five percent limit on recurring expenditures.
Can you clarify, so how many were there total?
There were six.
Six, so we're looking to maintain five.
We're looking to maintain five, and that has to do with having an equal number of firefighters on each shift, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Grace?
Yeah, sorry, I think me and James were playing whose hands up first. I appreciate the questions about the firefighters and the SAFER grant, because with personnel, that sixty-one, staying at sixty-one encompasses the SAFER grant fire officers being made into city-funded employees. Is that correct?
Correct, five of them.
So then, what did the overall staff decrease? I'm looking at page thirty-seven, the personnel summary, and that the fire operations staff is staying consistent. I don't see any increase or decrease because of these changes. It seems like there should be a net decrease of one overall. Is that right?
Let me, let me check on that and get back to you.
Okay. And then on that same page, I know we'll find out more next week, but I don't understand the police department staff numbers based on the narrative and description versus what's in this personnel summary.
Actually, I'm going to answer that question about fire, if you don't mind if I go back. So the reason is, we're assuming we'll retain all six through the end of next year, so that that last one, that will get absorbed through attrition as we have retirements. So, the number does stay the same next year, the following year would go down by one.
Okay, thank you.
And the question about police, yeah, probably is best answered next week, do you think?
Sure. And then, while we're on this personnel page, I noticed that there's not an increase in urban forestry under Public Works, although that's one of our council goals specifically laid out, to add one FTE tree arborist. I don't know if that's something, this is always the interesting position, how you want us to do this. Like, do we, you're saying that you think proper procedure, you want us to do a straw poll here? I'm not entirely sure how council is going to have input on this.
I'll just, I'll just say that the reason it's not included is, in terms of making choices, and the fact that those are two-year goals, and so we're not addressing everything immediately. So I just wanted, by way of explanation, what you choose to do from this point is your prerogative, of course, but I just wanted to explain that.
So I would ask that we could have a straw poll vote on that as council to add one FTE increase for urban forestry staff, as stated and agreed upon in our council goals.
Do you want to wait until the Public Works budget is presented?
That's fine with me, but also the later we wait, the more we say there's no time to talk about these things, so I'm trying to get them out earlier rather than later.
So I'll say two things. One is, Public Works doesn't have their own, they're not going to make a separate presentation.
Oh, okay.
And what I would say is just to remind you of what Elizabeth had said, which is, we're right at the limit of the financial policy for recurring expenditures. So if you're going to propose an additional recurring expenditure, then you're going to have to offset it with something unless you want to go above the financial policy.
Thank you. I absolutely propose to reduce some of our other expansions. Again, of course, that will be up to the majority of these elected officials, but I absolutely have some proposals for reductions as well. So back to the question, if we could have a straw poll vote for the increase in tree arborist, urban forestry, personnel in Public Works?
Can I make a suggestion? I would suggest, you may not be the only one who have ideas on increases or decreases, and it would be best to consider them all together rather than taking them one by one. So if people have...
When is the time for that?
Within the next couple of weeks. When would be, when would give you enough time, Elizabeth?
I mean, we could, we could do those on the tenth, we could potentially talk about it next week. I mean, I think the first thing I had to do is I had to provide you a cost for that, right? Because you don't, you don't know at this point what the cost is.
Sure, doesn't say what the cost of any of the personnel are on the sheet, if that's what we're talking about. I understand that's how it plays in.
Just with regard to that, I would suggest if we're going to talk about that in a holistic way, we do it next week in the Committee of the Hole. We can't, we can't push it off to the tenth. We have to start doing that.
All right. Then if you have suggestions, try to have them by next week, and then, should they ask for cost estimates in advance? Or just bring them to you so you can get the cost estimates?
Well, there's probably a limit to how many cost estimates I can have ready by Monday, so I don't know what I, what's coming.
I would say so for next, the goal for next week would be, if you want to make adjustments to the budget, bring your suggestions by next Monday.
Do you mean to next, this...
Committee of the Hole.
Next meeting for Monday, okay.
I would suggest, if you know what you want, ask for it by Thursday or Friday so that Elizabeth has a chance to make cost estimates.
So do we, could I clarify, do you want them, you would like our thoughts for recommended changes in an email before Monday, if possible, to have some prep work, and then we will discuss those at the meeting next Monday?
Yeah, I mean, I think Thursday would be ideal because I actually need to have time to put numbers to things. Friday would be okay, Monday, that's getting kind of tight, so. But just email me, we'll come up with numbers.
So thank you for the work on this presentation, and I know what goes into putting a budget together like this, and so I appreciate the effort. I do want to, I'm not finding the chart on the fund balance changes. As you may recall, I've, in the past, kind of asked us why we had such a thick fund balance, and so don't think I'm questioning about where we're going with, you know, getting right up to the edge of policy, but can you confirm, what I'm hearing is that all of the drop in fund balance is related to one-time expenses that are not going to be repeated year after year, because the concern I would have is that it feels like, it feels like we're leaving the fund balance in a place where it's at its border of meeting policy, and if any of the things that we're doing carries over into future years, we're at risk of crossing that line.
So it's tight. I mean, the gap is about 490,000 that's there that would be above the policy limit. The reality is, so part of estimating that is estimating our expenses for the current year, and I'll tell you that departments tend to overestimate, and then we find after June thirtieth that we actually have more left in fund balance than we expected. So it's probably not as tight as it seems, but yeah, largely, largely what happens with fund balance is it goes to one-time expense, so it's gone to different capital expenditures.
So we're not creating an obligation that is going to continue to erode the fund balance in the following years?
No, 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 we would never do that. And that, and that's what the recurring expense at ninety-eight point five percent of recurring revenue policy is really all about, so that we don't do that.
Is that one of the reasons why the one-time vehicle replacement thing is split over two years, so that we... So that we don't get right up close to that line with that correction?
Correct, yeah.
And remind me, with the firefighters that are currently funded, the six that are funded by grants, that's funded through March next year or February?
The grant ends in February.
Okay.
We have assumed for budgeting purposes that we would carry all six through June 30th. And we're assuming that at some point between the date in February when the grant ends and June 30th, we'd have some attrition.
So for next year's budget, we're essentially having to cover four months of those six people to get to the end of the year because it's, the grant is funding it through February.
Yeah, the grant's not funding 100% of it, but I think it was stepping down each year.
Okay, but then the following year, all of those costs are on us.
Right, all of the five.
And that's where it has to fit in, okay. The other thing I wanted to ask about was the sales tax projection for 2025. On page 25, there's state sales and home rule tax. I assume the home rule is our own sales tax.
Correct, that's our one and a half percent.
It's the blue one. So we're, in 2025, we're expecting it to go up to about what it was in 2023, even though we're saying it's dipping a little bit in 2024.
Correct.
Okay.
I have to look at my notes to remember exactly why that is.
And then my last question is, can you give me, with the proposed changes to police staffing in the budget, can you give me a rough, not exact, percentage of increase that that represents? My, I'm hearing around $2 million on a budget, so it's around $13 million. So that, in my mind, that's about 15% increase?
Yeah, so.
Am I missing something with that?
So if you want to know the increase that's due solely to the new positions, I'll need to calculate that and get back to you with a number. Because there are, there are increases in the budget just for current services. And so I need to parse those things out to do the math.
The reason why I'm asking that is because several of the speakers tonight threw out percentage increases that were much larger than that.
Correct.
And I'm trying to understand whether they were looking at a smaller picture, where they could have gotten those numbers or where they, they were misunderstanding how the numbers play out. Because my, my calculation is about 15%, but it's very rough.
So my calculation, looking at the bottom line on the police budget was, I think, I penciled that in here. About 18%.
Okay.
So from about 14 million to 15, or 16.5.
Okay.
But some of that again is for current positions.
Yeah, I was just doing ballpark numbers, so it doesn't surprise me that it's a little bit more. I just think it's important that when we're talking about this, that we are working from the same set of figures and same understanding, not saying whether 18% is the right amount or not. It's just not 61%, which is one of the numbers that I heard mentioned from people who were presenting.
I'm assuming that figure was for some period of years, multiple years.
Okay, yeah, it could be. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. And we will move on to Brayden Belcher and community development.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm here to discuss the requested increase in social service funding. So the community development department is requesting an increase in social service funding that would be managed by the Grants Management Division for our youth services grant program for fiscal year '25. So the request for this fiscal year is $200,000, which will bring the total social service funding for the youth services grant program to $300,000 in fiscal year '25. So I just wanted to give kind of a comparison of current levels of funding and then what it could look like with this additional funding. So at the current level, we have $100,000 that supports our youth services grant program. And with that amount of money, we are pretty limited in what types of programs we can support. Typically, we have been supporting about 10 individual grant awards with a maximum award amount of about $14,000 to $15,000. And again, that maximum is just to ensure that we can serve as many separate agencies as possible. So at the proposed funding level of $300,000, we estimate that we'd be able to support up to 30 individual grant awards to nonprofit agencies in Urbana. And we'd be able to increase that maximum award amount to $30,000, which again would just increase the impact that these programs can have in the community. So if this request is not approved, the Grants Division would continue to support social service programs like we always do using a combination of our community development block grant funding as well as around $75,000 in general funds. That has been the longstanding combination of funding. Actually, in the upcoming year, we have increased our CDBG contribution slightly to $30,000, up from the 25 that we typically would commit. And in terms of funding for this program, there's no really other feasible alternative that has been identified right now to increase the funding. You might remember two years ago, we did receive a DCEO grant that we were able to utilize to add funding to our youth services grant program. I'm always on the lookout for additional funding opportunities from the state to, to help, you know, facilitate funding to, to agencies in our community. But for this upcoming fiscal year, we, we don't have an opportunity like that. So I'll take any questions you have.
Grace?
Thank you. Could you clarify social service funding? Back to just some of possible misconceptions of saying that's not the only city social service funding, that's the only thing shared here, and that distinction about the general fund versus CDBG and home? And if you could remind us why those are decreased also?
Yeah, so, so this request is specifically for the youth services grant program. So that was what the mayor mentioned. That's, that's one piece of, of the social service funding that the Grants Division oversees. The Grants Division, I mean, annually, we manage around $10 million in funding from various local, state and federal resources. And, and those grant funds are used from everything, from, you know, housing navigation programs to rental assistance, to, you know, targeted infrastructure improvements in our low-income census tracts, code compliance in our low-income census tracts, all different types of programs. So there's a much larger piece. And again, it's made up of our HUD resources, various state resources, and again, local resources such as, as city general fund. The, the home and CDBG programs, like we talked about last week when I brought the annual action plan before all of you, we are seeing a decrease in about, about 21%. Those programs are being cut nationally, so it's not necessarily unique to Urbana to be seeing decreases in those programs. We have pretty substantial prior year balances that we are still able to spend on to support our, our program. So we're not anticipating any reductions or disruptions to our, our programs or services for this upcoming fiscal year. If HUD continues to cut funding in the future, you know, that would obviously be another situation we'd have to discuss. But for this upcoming year, we are, you know, continuing with all of our tenant-based rental assistance commitments, our CHODO commitments to Habitat and First Followers. All of that will be maintained at our prior, prior year levels.
Thank you. James?
So thank you, Brayden. I'm not asking you to be political.
Thank you.
That's our job, we have to wear our politics on our ballot. But what is the, what is the climate that is leading to this particular decrease we're seeing this year? Is it based on the compromises that had to happen for the federal legislation that's gone through this last year? Is it something that's like a cycle where we're at a, at a place where things are down? Or is it, if you can, without me asking you to be political, if you could kind of couch the circumstances that led to this particular decrease and, and, you know, gaze into your crystal ball and say, you know, is it something that's periodic? Or would it change abruptly if there was a different climate in Washington next year? And be, it's totally okay to say I don't want to speak to that.
I'll say what I, what I know, what I've, what I've heard from other communities and also from HUD itself, from the reports I've seen, this Congress, their goal has been to reduce domestic spending by 6% and increase military spending by 1%. So that 6%, you know, overall domestic spending, I think HUD was, they were looking at 10% for HUD specifically. And so again, that would trickle down to entitlement communities such as Urbana and Champaign and, you know, any other municipality that receives entitlement grants from HUD, either seeing reductions or again, shifting funds around to kind of meet those gaps. The home program has, was cut at a steeper rate. CDBG, they were able to kind of keep level, but again, because of inflation, if they're keeping it level, it's essentially a decrease in funding. So that's a little bit of the situation. And, and so Urbana is not unique in experiencing that.
So, so if someone is concerned about this, they can write their congressman about this?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
And, okay, I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Chandra?
Will we get a community development services presentation budget? Or is this just it? Well, this is just about services, services funding, but.
There will be.
I don't remember the.
Next week.
Could you turn your mic on, Carol?
I'll talk into it, I think I turned it on.
I don't remember the schedule that Elizabeth had up.
Yeah, next week we'll have the code, housing and code inspector presentation. If there's something else in particular that you wanted, we're not, we're kind of just trying to hit the highlights, but we can add something.
I was going to ask about this housing study, but I don't know if that's in with the.
I can, I can speak to that.
Just by who and when?
It would, it would be something that we would contract for. And we haven't, we're drafting a scope of work right now. This is something that was also, it's, even though you, you're not aware of it yet, this is something that is part of the comprehensive plan that would be proposed in the comprehensive plan, that we have a, have a full understanding of what is the supply and demand situation for all types of housing in Urbana. In the, in the past, what's, and what is done in some communities is there's a focus, and Brayden can probably even speak to part of this, which is sometimes there's a focus exclusively on affordable housing. And that gives you one piece of the picture. And sometimes there's a study done exclusively on market rate housing. Like if you're, you know, in a community that's trying to grow its workforce and people need a place to live. The idea behind this is that we really need to understand all the different ranges of affordability so that we know where the gaps are and where the gaps are widest and where we should be focusing our energies since we do have, you know, limited resources. So that would be the idea behind it, is just to really understand what's happening from a housing perspective in the city.
Okay, do you have maybe like an example of what a housing study looks like? I mean, I could probably Google it, but I don't know if you had one that another community has done. I just want to look and see what a housing study looks like.
Sure, we have examples of, or at least I have an example, it's probably from your office, of one that's strictly about affordable housing. And then we have another one from, I want to say Bloomington, that was strictly market rate housing. So you could see what they, they look like as separate parts.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Brayden.
And the last piece of this is look at the comprehensive plan called In-Mansion Urbana.
Thank you. I just have a couple of slides here to describe what we're asking for. Two one-time expenditures to get the comp plan over the finish line. So first is to extend a strategic advisor position. So this is Andrea Rudy's position for another six months to the end of the year. And that would be $81,600 for, as a one-time expense. And then we'd like to have, we don't know how much of this we might need, but we'd like to have some consulting services available in the event that we need something sort of at the end to get things over the finish line. And so one of the things that we're thinking that we might need, although we have found some relatively inexpensive support through the CCGIS folks that can assist us with mapping, but it's taking a lot of the, the verbiage and rendering it in visual form because maps are an important part of the comprehensive plan. But, so we, as I said, we need the funds to finish the plan by the end of the year. We've only had one dedicated staff member since last August when Lily Wilcock left. So that has been a challenge for us. And without the funds, the plan won't be completed this year. So I'm happy to answer questions about either of those requests.
Grace?
Thanks for the updates. Do we have some recent updates on this? I don't recall seeing many updates since the data collection last year.
We, we owe you an update and one of the reasons why we haven't been back is, is we, we do want to have some visuals of what we're preparing to show you and we, we don't have the visuals at the moment. That's why we're seeking some outside support in order to get the visuals. It really is going to lose a lot to give you an update without visuals.
And so the ask is for $81,000 some for six months to continue the staff member working on this and $50,000 in consulting services? And that's the mapping and kind of technical things you were mentioning, is that right?
Yes, I think at the moment, what I would identify primarily is mapping. And I, I don't think we're going to need the, the full amount, but this is the target number that we came up with.
Thank you.
Other questions? Got a hand, Charisse?
Yeah, kind of the hand. And this may not be pertinent necessarily to this, this last thing that you're talking about. What I am interested in is throughout this whole budget thing, how much is, has the census and the debt funding, that, those funds that we could possibly lose or gain? How, how much more would that ma, does that matter for us as far as a budget?
So I'm going to do this off the top of my head. So what's lost is already gone, it's not in the budget, right? So we're not losing from where we are now. If, if we gain, I would think, I think, you know, if we got back to the population number we're at, I think the number was roughly half a million in the general fund, plus it has impacts on other funds.
Okay, so it is important for us to get this special census done?
Absolutely.
October 15th is the official date, but plans are underway now.
James?
Since, since we're a little off topic with that, I will, I will ask, what's the earliest that the special census could actually affect funding? Is it in this upcoming fiscal, fiscal year or would it be the following fiscal year?
We all might have an opinion on this, but I think it's more likely the fall, by the time they certify the results and that gets communicated to the state and they adjust all their allocations, I would think it's next fiscal, it's FY '26.
Yeah, I don't have the exact day, but it does, there is a lag period between when the count's finalized and between when we get the funds. I don't have the exact day off the top of my head.
All right, thank you.
Chandra?
So you said it's just been one staff member working on the comp plan? And was that the strategic advisor or was that the planner? I thought there were two.
Once the planner left, we've, in August of last year, we've only had one dedicated person. We've had people, you know, supporting, but in terms of just, there used to be two dedicated people.
Right, okay.
Thank you. Charisse? Charisse.
I'm, I guess I want to add, okay, so Lily was, was working really diff, really in depth, in depth with Andrea, right?
Yes.
Regarding, she was the, she was the one dedicated person, and then Lily left.
The dedicated planner.
She was the dedicated planner.
Yes.
Okay, and then she's, now she's at the City of Champaign, and it's just been Andrea.
Yes.
That's it. Okay, so we need, we definitely need somebody else to.
And, and I do, I do just want to repeat something, that's, Andrea has been the only dedicated person. There have been other people assisting, but not on anywhere near a full-time basis.
Because everybody else, those people have other stuff that they have to do, but they, she's been getting help, but just not that.
Not the dedicated help.
Right, okay. I just wanted to understand that, okay? Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, the next item of business are staff reappointments. Just because we don't do this on a regular basis, I just wanted to give some background information. In the City of Urbana, there are about 15 positions that are appointed, brought to the council for approval of their appointments. They're brought by the mayor to the council for approval. The reason we have, we have, don't have a full list of 15 in front of you tonight. Some staff members were hired off-cycle, so their appointments end on a different basis. City council changed rules a few, a couple of years ago to allow for two-year appointments. So the folks in front of you all had appointments ending June 30th, 2024. Most of them were appointed in June of 2022. All the appointments from this point through the end of our terms have to end June 30th, 2025. We can't appoint beyond, beyond that date. So the staff members who are up for reappointment for the period July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025 are listed here. It's City Administrator Carol Mitten, Human Rights and Equity Officer Carla Boyd, Special Advisor for Integrated Strategy Development, which is Andrea Rudy, and her term would end December 31st, 2024. Human Resources and Finance Director Elizabeth Hannan, Fire Chief Kent Daman Dade, Public Works Director Tim Cowan, Deputy Public Works Director Vince Gustafson, and City Engineer John Zeeman. Before I ask for a motion, I will note that other staff who have appointments ending in June of 2025 are Information Technology Manager Thomas Webb, Chief of Police Larry Boone, Deputy Fire, okay, so those two. As I informed you last week, we have received resignation from Director of Community Development Services Kimberly Smith. And then our Fire Chief's appointment is required to end October 4th, 2024. The position of Deputy Finance Director currently is vacant, and as I noted earlier today, or informed you earlier today, we'll be bringing appointments for City Attorney and Deputy Police Chief at a later date. One of the police chief positions is actually budget dependent, so that's one of the reasons we're holding up on that. So, so up for today are the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight people listed in the memo.
Is there a motion for approval?
I'd like to move to approve City Administrator Carol Mitten, Human Rights and Equity Officer Carla Boyd, Special Advisor for Integrated Strategy Development Andrea Rudy, Human Resources and Finance Director CFO Elizabeth Hannan, Fire Chief Kent Daman Dade, Public Works Director Tim Cowan, Deputy Public Works Director Vincent, Vince Gustafson, and City Engineer John Zeeman.
Second.
Moved by Charisse, seconded by James. Question? Grace?
I would like to divide the question as a point of order.
Can you move to divide?
Uh, yes, and I could have a reminder on the procedure for that, but yes, I would move to divide the question and vote individually.
So yeah, only one member needs to request or motion to divide the question. No second is required to divide.
Do we need a vote?
To divide the question, no.
Okay.
No, but you will need to then motion and second and vote as usual for.
Which one?
Which, yeah.
And you want to take each one individually? All right. Is there a motion for approval of the appointment of City Administrator Carol Mitten?
So moved.
Okay.
Chris.
Thank you. I would move that, or I would recommend that this should, Carol Mitten should not be reappointed for the following reasons. Number one, uses two-by-two private meetings with two city council members at a time to count votes and manipulate city council members to conduct city business behind the public's back. Claiming to quote, "Seek direction from council," the administrator actually attempts to make decisions without public input and violates the spirit of the Open Meetings Act. Two, during a private meeting about the Hotel Royer, the administrator was asked if the hotel owners could be asked to reserve two units of the hotel for emergency rooms for homeless families in exchange for the public's $6.9 million tax investment in the hotel's renovation. The administrator replied, quote, "That's a firm no. Hotel guests do not want to see homeless people," end quote. Such outright bigotry and prejudice against poor people has no place in the City of Urbana's leadership. In several exit interviews with outgoing city employees who sought employment elsewhere, the city administrator was cited as creating a hostile work environment.
Excuse me?
One of their reasons for leaving the City of Urbana. Despite collecting and publishing data that indicates the City of Urbana has a very abysmal record at contracting with minority veteran and women-owned businesses for city contracts, the city administrator is openly hostile and argues against any meaningful ordinance to establish a city procurement policy, which she did in a private meeting May 23rd, 2023, and during council goal-setting on February 1st, 2024. Adopted on June 18th, 2021, city council, spearheaded by Alderperson's Colletetti and Bishop, sought a public safety review to quote, "Reimagine public safety that uses methodologies that focus on racial equity and social justice. The purpose of this review is to assess the current situation and make recommendations of meaningful long-term ways to increase community safety and well-being. The ultimate goal is to have information to assess the community's needs and address them effectively to increase community safety and decrease violence in a way that does not potentially cause further harm to the community," end quote. The city administrator hijacked the purpose of this public safety review to instead focus the review to include police and fire staffing. On February 10th, 2024, edition of Dialogue, a new radio program on the new Illinois Soul radio station run by Illinois Public Media on 101.1 FM, host Reginald Hardwick had Urbana Police Chief Larry D. Boone on as a guest and asked Chief Boone about how he felt about the pushback against his firing four new police officers at the December 4th, 2023 city council meeting. Chief Boone responded, quote, "Well, number one, shock, because they promised me they would give me what I wanted in order to come here. Let me just say that out loud, okay?" End quote. In the May 1st, 2024 edition of the News Gazette newspaper, Urbana Deputy Chief of Police Richard Searls was quoted in part, quote, "The staffing need was so apparent that he, Chief Boone, addressed the need for increased resources for the police department with both the city administration and the city council as a factor for him agreeing to be, accept the job as chief," end quote. Therefore, it is apparent the city administrator has promised a prospective city employee the affirmative votes of city council members without the city council's knowledge or consent. In fact, during a private two-by-two meeting on April 25th, 2023, the city administrator said there would be a need to raise taxes because, quote, "The city council may wish to consider increased staffing in police 41 days before Chief Boone was unanimously appointed to be chief by the city council." On page two of a memorandum for the FY 2024 Budget Amendment Number Five regarding police staffing to be voted on by council at the December 4th, 2023 Committee of the Whole, it read in part, quote, "Based on stakeholder feedback as well as experience in other jurisdictions, both Chief Boone and Barry Dunn have independently recognized community engagement as an area of significant potential for the Urbana Police Department," end quote. During the April 29th, 2024 special city council meeting, the Barry Dunn consultant was asked, "When did Barry Dunn submit their first report to the administration and police department?" They replied, "December 6th, 2023." The Barry Dunn consultant was further asked, "Did Barry Dunn recommend the Urbana Police Department hire four police officers in the fall of 2023?" The Barry Dunn consultant answered, quote, "That was not a Barry Dunn recommendation," end quote. Therefore, it is apparent the city administrator is willing to deceive city council with false information to gain a preferred vote.
Chris, you are accusing.
At the September 26th, 2020.
You're out of order.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are.
I have the floor. I have the floor. I have the floor.
I'd like to call a closed session for discuss personnel.
No, this has not been a closed session for personnel, because you've already put it in public that it is, since Thursday, this agenda was in the public, on the public website, that these, these reappointments were a public matter. This is part of the public business, and Diane, for your patience, I just have one more item, okay?
Chris, you did.
The city administrator applied for the city manager position in Evanston, Illinois, and publicly interviewed for the job as a finalist on July 28th, 2022. It is clear the city administrator no longer wishes to be employed or reside in Urbana. For those reasons, I submit this reappointment not be made. Thank you, thank you for your patience.
I would like to say that that was out of order. Personal attacks and attribution of intent is not allowed under Robert's Rules of Order. And so while you may report facts, you cannot ascribe intent. I have been a part of two-by-two meetings, and I have expressly asked the question, in your presence, Chris, if the intent was to create a, an outcome. And in that, in that, in that room, when you were in the room with me, that, the answer to that question was, no, we want to learn what is on the council's mind and assess what needs to be a part of the presentation. You and I were there together, and so now you've ascribed intent to something that I personally witnessed, at least on one occasion, where that intent was not there.
What she didn't witness were the two-by-twos that I was in and you weren't there, and I was asked for, how was I going to vote?
I can't, I can't, I can't comment to that. But I have, I have been part of many two-by-twos. In the two-by-twos I've been a part of, with just about every member of this council at some point or another, the discussion has been, what are the concerns that council members have that need to be addressed if this is going to come before us? And I think that's a perfectly acceptable approach to get feedback, particularly when council members are unwilling to engage on particular issues in those circumstances. So I don't, I don't believe that that part of your concern is something that is going to motivate me in this vote. I, I believe that the administrator has been doing the job that she's been asked to do, and I intend to vote for her.
And to follow up, the two-by-twos, I strongly support using them. As a council member, there were many times when I wished I had had opportunity to have more in-depth conversations, to get more information about an issue, and we were given very little information. The two-by-twos, you can always choose not to attend them, but they're intended to provide background information on very complicated issues. And the fact that you have twisted their intent and God knows what was said, you can't, nothing, we can, you can't prove anything about what you said, but they are not intended to hide or coerce. They're simply intended to provide information on complicated issues so you can make informed decisions. And if you don't want any more two-by-twos, that's fine. We can stop doing it. We can stop providing the information that you get in these sessions. And I can tell you, as a council member, I frequently got a call from the mayor asking me how I was going to vote, asking me if she could have her, my support for a particular issue, because she was trying to figure out if she had enough votes to bring an item to, to the floor. That is how it worked. It's how it works in the real life. But to, to twist the intent into ascribe intent is just abhorrent. No, I'm just telling you. Charisse.
And to follow that up, the two-by-twos, at least as far as I've, as long as I've been on council, and I've been on council longer than any of you, didn't even start, I remember, they were when I was first appointed, because me and a few other city council persons insisted on having more information before we came to a vote to, to vote on anything. And that's when two-by-twos started, as far as I know. And I appreciate the background information that I've gotten on several different items that have been coming up, including the Royer Hotel and that kind of thing, so that we could actually understand, rather than just have something on the agenda and something that would say, this is what this is, and now you figure it out. Because that's kind of how it was going for a minute. At least that's how I felt, let me put it that way. It was way over my head. I appreciate being given background information so that I can kind of get some idea. And as the mayor has said, if you don't want to come, don't come. You don't have to do two-by-twos. I know I've been scheduled to do two-by-twos with you and you've not shown up, so, you know, it won't be the first time you haven't shown up. And it's just one of those things that, you know, that it helps us to make more informed decisions for our constituency and for the city. That is why they were put in place. They were not put in place for any other, other thing, except the fact that me and a few other city council members who had actually been on city council, Lauren and me, finally just said, you know, we need to have more information. So if you don't like doing it, that's fine, because nobody makes you do it. It is, but personally, and I feel like this with anybody else on council, you don't want to do a two-by-two, you want to do a one-on-one, I don't care. If I need the information, I don't have a problem calling people and asking them for more information.
And I want to speak to the personal attacks. There's no person in this city who works harder or longer than Carol Mitten, and without her leadership, we would be nowhere close to where we are today. And to, it's, it's egregious. It's absolutely egregious. Nobody works harder than Carol. Then that's what you're appointing her for. You are ascribing personal intent, your personal attacks, your personal opinions. These are appointments that are being brought to you, and you're asked to approve them. Not, not to sit there and evaluate.
For the city's business, no, no, I'm not.
So. I call the question. Can somebody call the question?
I would like to be recognized, have my hand up for a while.
Grace.
I was just going to ask that everybody have the opportunity to speak at least once first, before folks speak more than once, and then we could maybe call the question.
Okay, thank you. And going with being recognized, I will just say briefly that, you know, I agree, we're not going to get into it here. I'm not going to add anything else. I have plenty of my own reasons for my votes on the appointments tonight. I have plenty of my own reasons for my votes on the appointments tonight. As far as the two-by-twos, everyone has their different opinions on that. That's totally fine. I'm personally not a fan, and I agree that I've, I have felt pressured to support things and give an answer on something in private. And I think that all that information could be made public. I think it could be even more convenient for council members to take time out of our workday for city staff to have one public meeting instead of a bunch of private meetings. And then, like I said, I'm not going to get into other things. Oh, but also I do feel like when I do give my input in the two-by-twos, I feel it has been ignored. I haven't felt that anything I've said in those has been taken into consideration. I can easily just be a dismissed minority, so that's fine. There's no reason to have to act on any of my opinions. But I will just point out, as far as the two-by-twos being what I believe misused and involving this appointee in particular is a public memo that's already made public from October 2021, memo for the discussion on procedures related to action items by council. Just want to say that is a published, publicly available, documented memo that involves issues with this appointee and the two-by-two process.
Jam?
So I think that there are elements of concern that a number of council members have expressed in terms of transparency and communication throughout this term. I cannot support how this was brought up. I think that there are concerns that are worth discussing, but I do also want to make sure that we are following the proper rules of order. I think that there are publicly available pieces of information. I also think that it is worth addressing the fact that there are a number of council members who have felt pressured within those meetings or that they are being asked to make commitments that are not appropriate in a private setting related to public, public topics. And I do think that's worth stating more generally.
Anyone else wish to speak who hasn't spoken? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Present.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
No.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Three yes, two no, one present.
That should pass.
Present, close with yeses. That motion passes. Human Rights and Equity Officer Carla Boyd.
I move approval.
Second.
You calling on me?
Chris?
Thank you. Carla Boyd should not be reappointed for the following reasons. Despite discussing in several meetings in the summer of 2021, the city of Urbana-
Point of order, Chris.
I have a right to discuss the appointment.
This is a yes or no vote?
No, it's, I have, it's a discussion about the appointment before we take the vote. Diane, just be patient, this one won't be as long. That despite discussing-
Yes or no at this point, Chris?
-in several meetings in the summer of 2021, the city of Urbana should adopt a procurement policy for city contracts that would seek to affirmatively hire minority-owned, women-owned, and veteran-owned companies, despite the city council adopting as priorities and goals that Urbana should, quote, "Support current local businesses," end quote, and, quote, "Enhance the champagne diversity advancement program to include more Urbana minority, women, and veteran-owned businesses," end quote, as a strategy to improve economic recovery and economic development. And despite this human rights and equity officer reporting to the Urbana City Council on April 18th, 2022, that in the last four years, the city of Urbana awarded only 2% of its contracts to women-owned and minority-owned companies, this human rights and equity officer has failed to facilitate any draft of a procurement policy, leaving the city of Urbana without such a policy to this day. On March 24th, 2022, at the Phillips Recreational Center, this human rights and equity officer presented to a room full of minority-owned and women-owned contractors, the champagne diversity advancement program. Such a presentation misled these businesses into believing the city of Urbana has a procurement policy in place that seeks to affirmatively hire minority-owned and women-owned businesses in city of Urbana construction projects, which the city did not and does not. At the March 20th, 2023 Committee of the Whole meeting, this human rights and equity officer erroneously advised the Urbana City Council that, quote, "The city's position is that we do not currently have the legal authority to compel a landlord to participate in the voluntary Section 8 or tenant-based rental assistant voucher programs," end quote, even though she readily admitted it was wrong to discriminate against someone for paying rent with a voucher. This new source-of-income discrimination policy suggested by this human rights and equity officer was in direct contradiction to the recently passed Illinois Human Rights Act effective on January 1st, 2023, and Urbana's human rights ordinance adopted in 1979. The city council was compelled to draft Resolution Number 2023-05-033R and pass this resolution at the May 8th, 2023 City Council meeting to correct the human rights and equity officer's misguided interpretation of current and past laws governing source-of-income discrimination. It is difficult to understand how an officer dedicated to protecting the rights of Urbana citizens and advance equity in the city of Urbana could ever arrive at policies supporting discrimination. For those reasons, I would advise not reappointing this nomination.
Any other comments? The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
No.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up, Advisor for Integrated Strategy Development, Andrea Rudy. Is there a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Present.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Wilkin?
Present.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Fire Chief, Damon Dade. Is there a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Moved by James, seconded by Sharice. Comments?
I'm sorry, who, who are we on now?
Chief Dade.
Okay, is this a different order than the memo or no?
No, we're following the order.
That's enough, we'd skip finance.
The revised memo was sent out today.
Yep, that's what I'm looking at, just making sure we didn't skip Human Resource and Finance Director.
Human Resources and Finance Director.
We already have a motion.
Well, we have a motion on the floor for Chief Dade. We'll go back. Comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Colasetti?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Human Resources and Finance Director, Elizabeth Hammond.
I move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Colasetti?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Present.
Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Public Works Director, Tim Cowan.
Move for approval.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Evans?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Colasetti?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Public, Deputy Public, let's see, Deputy Public Works Director, Vince Gustafson.
Move for approval. Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Evans?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Colasetti?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. City Engineer, John Zeeman.
Move for approval.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Colasetti?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. That completes the reappointments for tonight. We'll move on to the Ward map discussion. I shouldn't take long.
All right, thank you. I'll be really brief. I don't really have much to say. We, last time we talked-
Just speak into the mic a little bit closer.
Sorry, I should remember that by now. Last time council met to discuss Ward maps, council selected three finalists, and we set the, put those finalists out on our website and solicited public feedback. Since then, we've just gotten just a few emails, which everybody should have all of the copies of those. And then other than that, the goal today is to discuss the finalists and move towards the ultimate selection of a map. Once a map is selected, we'll have to take the map from DRA, which uses loose geography, and then put that in an official map with official ward boundaries, and then come back with an ordinance adopting the map. So that's all I have today, and it's a council discussion item.
I would add, as far as public comments that were sent to the dedicated email, there were three members of the public who favored map two, one member of the public who favored map one, and one member who didn't indicate a preference other than that they couldn't tell what the western boundaries were.
Can I, can I confirm that it's finalist map two?
Yes.
Right, okay, thank you.
Also, just as a point of order, it is 10:23, so we have seven minutes until we would have to extend the meeting.
Is there a motion to extend for 15 minutes, or till 10:45?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. All right, we're extended till 10:45. If it's possible to settle on a finalist tonight, we'll have time to, in order to get this into a final format and to draft a ordinance supporting it, it'll give us time to have that done. But is there a way to eliminate at least one of these maps? How do you want to proceed? Are you ready to vote on a final map? Sharice?
I need to see what the finalist maps are again. I'm sorry, I don't mean to.
Can you clarify to which ones had support based off of the previous numbering system?
It's hard to pick.
Thank you.
Can you remind us which ones? So eight and nine are two and three. Map seven is one, right? I got there, okay.
And which ones had community support? I'm sorry. Two, which is eight? Okay, thank you.
James?
Based on our review and the scoring methodology and the feedback so far, I would be comfortable in advancing finalist number two, formerly map eight, as the map that we choose if people are ready to vote on it.
I would second that.
Is that a formal motion?
Chris has made it a motion by seconding.
Discussion.
So this is a discussion, so I believe we can only reach like a consensus or a straw poll.
Yeah, because we not, we have-
Right, not actionable tonight.
Can we reach a consensus on finalist two? Grace?
This is, you know, not a hill I'm willing to die on, exhausted and don't plan to run again anyway. But I do want to say some things about map two, finalist two, from a Ward six perspective. I think that map two slash eight makes, I agree, probably the most sense for campus area. And again, admit that that's not my familiarity, so when I was making map nine, that's not what I know what dorms are where to even include that. So I think that map two slash eight has a lot of advantages of how it's mapped out campus area. From the Ward six perspective, it absolutely changes the character in really key neighborhoods in current and historic Ward six. I think that, you know, the next elected person will get used to it. It might make some sense in some ways. I'm not sure if all of Suna is in Ward six now or not. I mean, it was already split before, but at least most of it was in seven and just a little bit in six. That whole area south of Washington and kind of Learman Rainbow area has been a historic Ward six neighborhood. I don't know why that's less valid than any other neighborhoods and wards. And then the whole Silver Votter area east of Philo is completely changing wards, which I think that there's some ways to say it makes sense that Ward six would include both sides of Philo to some parts. But I do want to express that this is a big change. I think people are looking at it because maybe some wards haven't changed and because campus makes sense. But I think for the southeast side of Urbana, you're absolutely changing some key neighborhoods, historic wards.
Any other comments? James?
Yeah, I would like to speak to that. I think Grace raises a really good point. I will say, as the representative, current representative of Ward seven, moving the line to Anderson Street does divide what is, what is called Suna in half, essentially. I will say that over my, I've lived in Ward seven for 24 years now. I do know that this neighborhood does feel a protective relationship with Orchard Downs. So having them to be added to that area and some of the population along Florida Avenue, I think that is, that's a good thing. I know some people will look at this change and say it's, it's, it's a hard change for Suna, but, but the, the city has changed a bit, and Ward seven had been that way for maybe three map iterations at this point. And we know the city has changed and where the population is, has moved around. But that Suna area, that area bordered by Race and Philo and Windsor and Florida, has been fairly static during that time as far as housing goes and as far as changes go. So, so I acknowledge that it's a significant change, but compared to the other two maps, which have problems of different natures, particularly around the campus area, and I just think, I think this stands out as the best of the three that remained.
Any other comments? Jam?
I will say, you know, that obviously Orchard Downs is currently part of Ward four, so this map has very significant changes for Ward four as well. But I, you know, again, there is that kind of connection to Ward seven already. I will say I'm still kind of processing what this would mean for the fourth Ward. Similarly, I'm also not planning to run again, so I certainly don't want this to be based just on, on my opinion. I do think despite the, I want to note that they are significant changes to the fourth Ward as well. But for myself at least, I think the fact that it still includes kind of the- But for myself at least, I think the fact that it still includes kind of the, a centralized portion of the ward is important. I think it can end up with us being very focused on campus representation, and I think making sure that we're prioritizing having wards that represent a more diverse range of areas within the city is important. So I don't know personally that I'm quite ready to, to vote. Might like a little bit more time, since if we're, we're looking at Map 8, which is now 2, that would mean a very significant change for the fourth ward.
Any other comments? Grace.
Could you remind me, do we have the link to the Dave's Read-Dic Striking maps accessible? Like, we could look at Map 2, for example, on Dave's Read-Dic Stricking and possibly make some modifications? I don't know if we're, if we're seeing that as an option. Like, I would be okay with saying, seems like, yes, Map 2/8's kind of the, the lead runner, and particularly for the campus area, but I would still be interested in taking a stab at those south wards, particularly 4, 6, 7, you know, part of 5 being a part of that, and seeing if we can find some kind of modified compromise that might make sense for both campus and South Urbana.
I would say one thing to keep in mind, it, it's predictable that there are significant changes in these wards, because you have a combination of the census, the impact of the census, and that was, that was literally all in the campus area, but you also have the impact of the growth in housing in South Urbana. And so it's not surprising that the wards are changing significantly this time around compared to historically. Historically, the city didn't change much, you know, from the last 15 years. So, I mean, if you, at this point, we are under, we need to get these maps done, because people who are considering or thinking about running for city council need to know what ward they live in. So we've gone through an extensive process. We have considered these for a number of weeks, and this is a good map. It reflects, yeah, you can, in a minute, this is a good map. This reflects the population distribution that we have to deal with. If we didn't have the census impact, we might have more choices. Sharice.
I just, I just want to add is, because the ward I represent can't grow out anymore the way it is. So the only way, I get what Grace is saying, but the, the, the changes are going to happen in the south, because that's where the growth availability is, mostly. Yeah. So. I, you know, I, my ward can't, can't, basically, I go across, my ward goes across 74, and then that's all industrial. I haven't, I haven't really seen any, any population growth capabilities.
Yep, and to my understanding, I don't know that the southern border of the city has really expanded that much. I'm not sure about population either. I don't think we have dramatic changes here, do we, from the last map?
We have changes in population in the fact that South Ridge and Myra Ridge subdivisions built out, and the subdivisions are filling in. So yeah, you didn't expand the city boundaries, but the vacant lots in subdivisions have been built on, and you do have the development of South Ridge.
There have been 50 new homes in Stone Creek area alone in the last four or five years.
And there's 40 homes under construction in Spannagreen.
There's as many lots still available twice over in the Stone Creek area that could be built out.
Over 100 lots have been sold, so yeah. So I guess I need a straw poll, I would like a straw poll, is, are you ready to send a finalist Map 8 to committee for consideration next week, or do you need more time? Thanks.
I'd like to see us have this discussion next, next week, as, with an action item of potentially selecting a map to recommend to councils, so that, one, is Mary Alice going to be here next week?
She'll be here next week.
So we would have us all be, all be here. We could have some further conversations, maybe along the lines that Grace was discussing, as far as is Map 8 the way it needs to be, or Map, finalist Map 2 the way it needs to be, or there are some slight adjustments that could be made. We can talk about that next week and take action to send it to council for approval the following week. I do feel like we're hearing some consensus on Map 8 or a variant, but I do feel like we, we should have a little more conversation and a vote next week.
Okay.
Chris?
Okay, we'll pick up the discussion next week. It will focus on Map 8. And after that, then, we'd have to have a ordinance and map prepared for consideration, so it would be on city council or committee of the whole, the committee of the whole 17th.
If we have, if we have the discussion-
For a final vote on the 24th.
Yes, if we have the discussion the 3rd, it could be ready as soon as the 17th for an ordinance. I will say, we are short GIS staff, right? GIS staff, and the DRA maps are, using our old previous GIS specialist terms, a little sloppy from a legal standpoint, so we need to get, take the DR, DRA map and make it legally sufficient. So that might take a little time. I think two weeks between should be sufficient, but just to let you know that, that might be a delay in the process.
That'll keep us on track. Okay, thank you. With no further business, this meeting is adjourned.